Well, we're waiting. Like to call this meeting to order? Could all please rise? I'd like to ask Pastor James Julian with New Life Church to lead us in prayer this morning. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, thank you. Heavenly Father, we come this morning to direct our attention. We pray for wisdom. We pray for guidance as we look over just the business of this city to make it the place to live that would bring glory to your name, that would bring honor to who you are. Lord, as we honor those who have served this city this morning, as we look over other proposals and final plans, we ask that you would speak to hearts and that we would do what you require of us, to live justly, to love mercy, to walk humbly before you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Dewitt, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
It would be an honor, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba, Councilwoman Dewitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Present.
Councilman Forbes.
Here. Good morning. We had a former president, though he's in the Senate, used to vote that way, Mike, so. We are going to start with public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Good morning, Barbara.
I apologize for speaking now because I have to leave and so I can't wait for the agenda item, which is 7D, to which I speak. And I speak as a member of the zoning board at this point. I want to urge you to support the changes that the zoning board is bringing to you for the process, the procedure that we are to follow in making zoning decisions on planned developments. And I want to say why, I think I've probably said this before, but I think maybe underscoring it again is not bad. It is not possible to make a reasoned decision based on the facts if the facts are not provided to us. Under our current zoning process, applicants are not required to provide the basic information necessary for us to make a reasoned decision under the law. Our surrounding communities, including Astero and Naples, demand in their zoning process that the necessary information be provided. We must also do so if we are to abide by the requirements of our own law. I wish to underscore that when you as the council and I as a zoning board member act to hear and decide zoning applications, whether appeals or applications for planned developments, we are acting under the law in a judicial-like capacity. As a member of the zoning board, I am and you as the council are required by law to make a reasoned decision based on facts and law when we are sitting as a quasi-judicial review board. It is the case that neither you nor I can do this often because our process as it exists at present does not require applicants to provide the necessary information for us to do so. We don't have the record before us to make a reasoned decision. It is critical that we update our procedures to allow us both to do what our own law requires us to do. By so doing, we are not putting ourselves at a disadvantage with neighboring communities which already demand this of applicants in their development process. I urge you to support the proposed changes that the zoning board is bringing to you this morning, which will be discussed by the other members of that and the staff when 7D comes onto the agenda. Or if you are not willing to support those, to come up with your version of what a fair process would be that would allow us both to get the information that we need. And I thank you very much and I wish you luck.
Thank you, Barbara. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Morning, Linda.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm here to strongly support the changes proposed by the zoning board members. We have had too many developers present very sketchy plans and years go by without seeing any progress on their projects. So the new requirements proposed by the zoning board would require commitments by the developer and should have a timeframe in terms of completion. And then the city councils should also abide by those timeframes. And especially important is the architectural section on elevations, particularly the finished first floor elevation, so that we can anticipate future impact of water drainings on surrounding properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Morning, Ben.
Morning. Morning, City Council. Ben Hershinson. I here just to support the proposed changes by the zoning board. In Maine, there's a saying we all know, well heard of it, and that is if anything broke, don't fix it. But somehow, there's a corollary to that. In government, a lot of times, they try to fix things that are broken, or I'm sorry, they try to fix things that ain't broke. And on the other hand, things that are broke, they don't want to fix. This needs to be fixed. If somebody really wants something to, as a sleeping pill, try reading the Land Development Code for this city. It has got to be one of the most confusing things I've ever looked at in my entire life. So having said that, it's time to fix things. And so I support this wholeheartedly. I think we need it, especially with planned developments. I live in an area where something is probably going to be happening fairly soon, and I'm very, very concerned that if we don't have the right standards and details in place, we are going to suffer. And there's one word that constantly comes to my mind: water. Water, water. Keep building, where's it going to go? So I want to say again, please support this. I hope City Council unanimously agree to these changes that are being proposed, and I look forward to Larry's presentation a little bit later. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good morning, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Billy Cobb. I'm currently the President of Bonita Springs Little League. I'm here to speak today about the item, Agenda Item 8A. First, I'd like to thank Mr. O'Flynn for putting this on the agenda and bringing it in front of council. The fees that the city is currently requesting from Bonita Springs Little League amount to about 30% of our operating budget for our season. We service about 350 youths from the city of Bonita Springs and surrounding areas that are within our boundaries. And Little League International says that we are not allowed to require these children to play, or to pay to participate in Little League. So the city is requesting a fee from each one of our players that we may or may not recoup that money from. We have to allow those children to play Little League baseball. It's part of Little League International's charter. So as far as the agenda item is concerned, I'd like to request that we don't have to pay these fees, that these fees are eliminated from Bonita Springs Little League and the youth soccer organization, of which both I have played. I've lived in Bonita Springs my entire life, and I just don't think that any of you can sit up here and justify charging the youth of this city for these programs.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Council, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, has been a motion to approve and a second? Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Okay. We're now going to move on to proclamations and presentations. If Meg Weiss could come forward, please.
Hello.
Hello. After you.
Good morning, Meg. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Well, it's another morning and 10 years of mornings for your service. This is proudly presented to Meg Weiss from the city of Bonita Springs as of the 28th day of January, well, so we're nine and a lot of change.
Yes.
But 28th day of January 2019, in appreciation and recognition for 10 years of public service to the city of Bonita Springs. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons and City Manager Arlene Hunter. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, okay. All right. No speech. Thank you, Meg.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Could I have the folks with the National Human Trafficking Program, please come forward?
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Yes, sir. How are you?
This is a proclamation on the city of Bonita Springs for the National Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, January 2019. Whereas January 2019 has been designated as National Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month by the federal government, and whereas the Lee County Sheriff's Office and community organizations founded one of the first human trafficking task forces in the country in 2005, which continues to be actively involved in the fight against modern-day slavery through the United States Attorney's Southwest Florida Human Trafficking Task Force. And whereas the state of Florida is recognized as one of the three states with the highest incidence of human trafficking, and also as one of the states which is doing the most to combat this crime in terms of legislation and victims treated, and whereas federal, state, and local law enforcement and local organizations such as the United States Attorney's Task Force Abuse Counseling Treatment, Catholic Charities, Human Trafficking Awareness Partnerships, Children's Advocacy Center, Florida Gulf Coast University, Florida Southwestern State University, Hodges University, and Lee Health are working collaboratively to build awareness through community and educational events and trainings, prevention programs for youth, business, and medical facilities. Now therefore, I, Peter Simmons, Mayor of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, proclaim January 2019 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month in Bonita Springs, Florida. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, January 16, 2019. Thank you for your amazing, that was a mouthful. Thank you for your amazing work.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you all for taking the time to recognize our efforts and your busy schedules. I'm Sam Lewis, Board Member of Human Trafficking Awareness Partnerships, and this is Karen Patty, and she's just going to say a few words about our mission and our programs.
Thank you. This is obviously a very serious subject, and hopefully many of you read the very sad story yesterday of the case in Lehigh Acres where I think four people were arrested, one still at large, and there were at least two victims that were runaway boys that voluntarily went with these men. And that is a very common situation of how victims become victims. Our job is not rescue or restoration. Our job is prevention, which is very hard to measure, but in our opinion, right, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So that is, our mission is prevention. We primarily do it through art. We have created an art reach program, which we have conducted here in Bonita Springs many times, this year with New Horizons and the YMCA. But we are, we teach typically at-risk children, although I think any child is at risk as we understand their hormones and development. And we teach them through art, through a multi-week program. So we teach them about the risks and lures of human traffickers, and then they create art to tell that story, and through that, they really understand, come to understand. And because multiple children are doing it, they each hear how one another have perceived human trafficking. So we encourage you through this awareness month to learn more. We have a fabulous website, Human Trafficking Awareness Partnerships is our website. And we thank you very much for your interest in this really serious subject.
And for more information on training your organization, our prevention programs, or just any volunteer information, if you're interested, please contact NOLA@HumanTraffickingAwarenessPartnerships.org, or just visit our website, HumanTraffickingAwareness.org. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your outstanding work in this very unfortunate reality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the great work.
Stay for a photo op.
Oh, yes, photo op. Are you sure that thing works? Sounds like the batteries are running low.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Item C, which is 7C, Stormwater Utility Project Update from Stantec Consulting Services. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm going to ask Stantec to come forward and give you your monthly update as we move forward with this process. At the conclusion of the presentation, we are going to ask for some direction from council today regarding the required advertising needed, and this leaves the option open for the council to continue this process. We are required to advertise a notice of intent by January 23rd, so we'd like to receive direction on that today. Additionally, Stantec will be going through a series of public workshops they will be looking to have at our local schools and outreach programs that they're going to be facilitating. This continues to leave the process open if we move forward today with the advertising, with discussions to happen during our budget process this summer, and not a final adoption until September. And with that, I'll ask Stantec to come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Tim Hancock with Stantec. I have the pleasure of leading our talented team, and this is our monthly update to you. I was interested this morning, you had four public speakers, and two of them mentioned stormwater. They are not our plants. We didn't pay them to be here. But it's obviously something that's on the mind of your community, and so I think as we continue this process with your leadership and guidance, I think we're hitting on elements that are critical and important to the community at large. So what we're going to cover today is, number one, we're going to do a quick recap. While you have heard this before, there may be people here present today or monitoring at home, that this is the first they're hearing of it, so I want to give a quick little background on that, and then we're going to go into, I'll bring David Hyder up. David is going to look at the refined fee calculation. In other words, if you were to go forward, we told you last month, we'd continue to drill down on, get a little more accuracy on what that fee amount could be in order to maintain and keep the existing level of service you have. We'll be presenting that, as well as a credit program. So today, when we get into that side of things, we are going to get a little more into the financial weeds with you today. So it's going to take a bit more concentration on everybody's part. We appreciate that in advance. We will be asking for-
Tall task. I'm out.
What is it, it's only 20 after 9:00 has the coffee kicked in, is everyone ready for this? But we are going to ask for some guidance from you at the end of the presentation today.
Oh, we're ready for the drill down. We like that term.
Yes, excellent. And in preparing for the public engagement, I'd like to remind you that it's been our experience, we all know information today can travel very quickly. Misinformation travels like wildfire.
Right.
And so we want to be very careful that we are deliberate in how we proceed with our public engagement process in representing the process itself and the material that goes forward. So sometimes, our goal is to get out in front of misinformation as much as it is to disseminate information. So going into a recap real quickly, the stormwater system challenges, the things you face as a city that you have to wrestle with every year, are keeping up with the rehabilitation and replacement of aging infrastructures. We all know some of this infrastructure was put in the ground in the 50s and 60s and does require replacement. In many cases, we have corrugated metal pipes, which in the water table of Southwest Florida age very quickly. Those have to be repaired and replaced, as well as inspected, to make sure you see the problems before they occur. We have water quality needs for the community. Again, the city of Bonita Springs is very aggressive about your pursuit of improved water quality. You're to be commended for that, however, there's always a price tag associated with those efforts as well. And part of that is measured in the TMDLs, the Total Maximum Daily Load for the Imperial River, a primary receiving body. We all understand after this past year, the potential impacts to water quality from things such as stormwater runoff and how it can or cannot contribute to worsened conditions. The other thing is that stormwater, the challenges are, there's no dedicated funding source for capital expenditures for your stormwater system. So you're year to year trying to figure out, how are you going to come up with those matching grant funds in order to leverage state and federal funds that are made available to you? And stormwater utility gives you the option of having a dedicated funding source for that purpose. So what is a stormwater utility again? It is simply a method of organizing and funding your stormwater management practices with dedicated revenues. Those revenues will be generated from user fees in a utility versus an ad valorem fee. And it's based on the individual parcel's use of the system. Examples include, for example, we pay our water bills based on the amount of water we use. Our solid waste collection, it's on the tax bill. It's not a tax, it's a fee. However, you know what you get for it, how many times your trash is picked up, and you're assured that you have the money to keep the landfills open and keep that waste stream moving. A stormwater utility is kind of a blend of those things. We measure your contribution, you are assessed based on your contribution, it's on the tax bill, and it is a fee for use. The biggest shift we're looking at in creating a stormwater utility in the city of Bonita Springs is to shift from an ad valorem base to a user fee base, basically changing the bucket, from the ad valorem bucket to a fee-based bucket. The benefits of a stormwater utility, dedicated, stable funding, if structured properly, it is fair and equitable. More importantly, it's transparent. You know exactly, as a citizen, where your money is going. Based on local needs, it does help you leverage more matching grant funds. It helps fund water quality and flood protection projects, not just on a regional basis or citywide basis, but you can drill down and be more local in those solutions as well. It does give you a dedicated funding source for operation, maintenance, and replacement, and it also encourages and recognizes communities that have onsite management. Now, for those technical weeds I was talking about a little bit earlier, I'm going to introduce Mr. David Hyder. You've met David several times. David's going to go over kind of the drilled down and refined fee calculations and how we got there.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good to see everybody again. We are going to drill down a little bit more here, but it's not too technical, so don't be worried. In terms of the structure, I just want to remind everybody again, last time we talked about three key considerations with a stormwater utility. What should the city fund, which defines the level of service, that's essentially the cost that we're going to recover in a stormwater fee? What's the fee basis? So how would we actually measure the contribution, often termed the fee base? And then ultimately, how should the stormwater fee be structured? So those are the three key considerations we talked about last time. I'm going to drill down into each of those with some refined analysis that we've completed over the last month. So first off, the refined level of service. If you recall, we've talked about three primary buckets of expenditures. Those would be operating expenditures, your capital maintenance, repair, and replacement, and then potential capital. You can see the funding sources that are currently used to fund those, general fund for operating, gas tax for capital maintenance, and then your potential capital, there is no dedicated funding source, as Tim mentioned. At prior meetings, we've identified certain costs associated with your average annual expenditures that you've spent within these categories. Over the last month, we've met with staff, we've refined our analysis, and we've identified some additional costs that you're currently actually incurring associated with stormwater management. So I want to make it real clear that these are not additional expenditures that we're recommending you incur to provide stormwater management. In particular, on the operating expenditures, there was just a contract that we thought only a portion was for stormwater management, but it turns out it's all stormwater management. So we now feel like we have a full picture of the universe of expenditures that the city is currently incurring associated with stormwater management. And again, these are not additional expenditures, this is what you're currently incurring in fiscal year 19. As we talked about last time, you have the option of funding any one of these levels of service. You could fund them all from a stormwater fee, or just one of them, or any combination. So that's the level of service. We've also refined our impervious surface analysis. The impervious surface that we've developed is based on aerials that were flown by Lee County, and they flew those between January 31st and February 2nd of 2018. So during that, since that point in time, there has been some development within the city. And so we went back, we talked to the property appraiser, and we've identified 361 additional developed parcels and impervious surface within the city. The vast majority of those are down in the southeast corner where development has happened. It's important to note that the Lee County does fly the aerials on an annual basis, so we will get new actual impervious surface available this summer. But any stormwater utility, while your database, your billings that you bill on impervious surface is relatively static because there's not a tremendous amount of change over time, it does change to some degree, so you continually do need to update that database. So it's a typical process associated with stormwater utility.
I guess we're, I have a question. Do you want to take questions at the end, or?
No, we can take them in.
Greg, go ahead.
I just had a, well, it's kind of an end-user question.
Sure.
And it's kind of to you and John Dahmer, and we talked about, it's kind of brought up with the zoning, about, you know, planned developments that are there but don't get developed for two to three years out, maybe four to five years out.
Sure.
Is there a way to front-load that? Can you charge them, because let's use BSU as an example. Once you get a meter with BSU, they charge a fee, whether one drop of water goes out that meter or not.
Right.
So once that planned development is there, is there a way to say, all right, we know you're going to have so many units here, you need to start paying now, to kind of hold their feet to the fire, not to change it?
That is an interesting concept. There's no development, though, you're saying? There's no actual impervious?
But they've been approved, let's just say, for 100 houses, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Just pick a number. Do you start charging for 100 houses on day one, or when the 100 houses are complete?
And it goes piecemeal like that?
Yeah. Or if 10 houses are done.
Exactly.
Sorry, Greg, not so-
That's a great question. I've done a lot of these, and that's one that I've never contemplated. Do you have any experience of that?
Just tapping a little bit of background in public service, there are statutory requirements as to when and how you can charge certain fees. And I think as you use water as an example, you can't really ask, you know, when the meter's there, yes, you start charging a base fee. But in this case, once a unit, let's say you did adopt a stormwater utility, and you said, we're going to assess one ERU per single-family home. The moment that CO occurs, you now have a single-family home on the books, and it would be eligible to be, begin being charged at the point you update your billing file. So how frequently you update your billing file, you know, is one step. But the reality is, if this is to appear on your tax bill, you would basically catch those units once a year. But if you try and front-load that, I think it runs against the basis of, we're charging for the impervious that's out there? Because if they haven't built the home and installed the driveway, there's no impervious. It's not creating runoff contributing to the system, so you may have difficulty in front-loading that.
Well, I guess the reason I ask this is, and let's go to the, like you talked about, the southeast corner. We know that there's, you've captured 361 today. We know that there's two other large developments going there. We're getting ready to do some stuff with Logan Boulevard based on what we think is there, but what actually shows up there, we may have underestimated it, where if we could get the front-loading of it, we can make it bigger, as big as we think we need it, and help it now instead of four years from now when the next development goes in, instead of waiting for that and then going, uh-oh, it's too small, we've got some things changed. Instead of 300 impervious home sites, we've got 400 now, and now we've made that area too small, or that drainage too small, is my thought.
I think- Let's work with staff-
Okay.
-and council on that, because I think there's some, I think there's a number of issues in that, in that that we want to address, and probably best not to try and tackle-
Yeah, no, Fred and then Peter.
Yeah, a case in point, I know, I think we can split the baby somewhat to get what Greg is proposing, but do what you're doing. In front of us is a development by McGarvey. McGarvey doesn't have a CO for one of those buildings, but he's, he's got massive paving in place, he's got buildings, solid tilled-up concrete buildings and all that. So they're, even if they're not occupied, even if they don't have a certificate of occupancy, they're creating more runoff than they did before they did all that. So I think by working with John Dahmer and possibly Pete Hyers, the Building Inspector Chief, that you can probably come up with a way to get data quicker into the system, so.
There are communities that, that don't rely 100% on a utility fee, for example, or ad valorem, and at the risk of rolling a small grenade in the room, you know, there is an option of stormwater impact fees, which would-
Yeah, a case in point, I know, I think we can split the baby somewhat to get what Greg is proposing, but do what you're doing. In front of us is a development by McGarvey. McGarvey doesn't have a CO for one of those buildings, but he's, he's got massive paving in place. He's got buildings, solid tilled up concrete buildings and all that. So they're, they're, even if they're not occupied, even if they don't have a certificate of occupancy, they're creating more runoff than they did before they did all that. So I think by working with John Dahmer and possibly Pete Hyges, the building inspector chief, that you can probably come up with a way to get data quicker into the system, so.
There are communities that, that don't rely 100% on a utility fee, for example, or ad valorem. And at the risk of, of rolling a small grenade in the room, you know, there, there is an option of stormwater impact fees, which would catch some initial areas. And, and my suggestion is not to tackle that today, and hopefully not to put it in the newspaper today. But, but, but when you're looking at that issue, I think we have to look at regulator, regulator, regulatorally what you can achieve at that stage of development. So our suggestion for this, what we're proposing or bringing forward to you is, let's keep this as simple as we can and create a mechanism and a vehicle. Should it be your desire to, to have a stormwater utility? And then looking at something like potentially capturing development as it's permitted may be another tool in the bag that we tackle down the road.
Thanks. Peter?
No, I'm okay.
You're okay? Okay. Can we go back one slide?
Sure.
And maybe you do this in the wrap up, but you're, you know, you're talking about different levels of service. What's the best breakdown for the, the different levels of service? Like in other words, if somebody's trying to wrap their head around this and say, okay, I know what a drainage ditch is, I know what a culvert is and, you know, X, Y and Z. But obviously, some things are working, some things are not working.
Right.
If you're Joe Q. Citizen, or you're the mayor of Benita Springs and you're trying to wrap your head around this. What, what, what's, what is the drill down, the bottom line on the different levels of service and the costs?
So essentially what we've identified here with CAT, with A and B is basically status quo. The city would continue to do what they're doing today. So A is the maintenance, I'm sorry, it's the, the operating expenditures, it's your NPDS permit, so your regulatory requirements. It's the managing exotic vegetation, managing cleaning catch basins, doing all the, the day-to-day maintenance on the system. So that's, that essentially is funding your current, just ongoing maintenance of the system, making sure that things are clean, clean, clear, that water can flow, things of that sort. And then.
And to that point, obviously during Irma, we saw that there was a lot of systems that we currently have in place that were not maintained and properly, that were not draining properly. So that's just to have things operate properly.
Correct.
Which, which is a big deal, obviously.
Oh, it is a big deal.
That's just a, okay, the status quo, and then C, is that?
And then C is essentially giving you above and beyond, it gives you that dedicated funding source. So right now, you're, I don't, you're, I guess on an annual basis, you're deciding, okay, how do we pull together funds from the general fund that we can provide for these matching grants? This potential capital that we've identified for item C would give you that dedicated funding source on an annual basis, you know it's there. You can leverage that to, for the matching grant funds essentially. Item B is you're also doing that currently, it's funded from the gas tax, it's the maintenance, it's the repair and replacement of your existing assets, so that's more capital related. But essentially, item C is really the only item that would be going above and beyond the, the current status quo. And it would be giving you that dedicated funding source.
And what?
The other thing I want to add, and this goes back to conversations we've had, is your staff is undertaking a very thorough assessment throughout the community right now on the stormwater side. I think trying to look at bumping up the level of service, for example, instead of cleaning catch basins once every seven years, we're going to make it once every five years, as an example. Let's just draw that out. I think before doing that, we want to establish that base level, existing level of service. Then as your staff goes through a more comprehensive analysis, we're going to start to see where maybe some of the chinks in the armor may lay. They may be neighborhood based, they may be system based. But once you have that, they would be able to come back to you and say, this is what our current level of service is. This is what the industry generally wants to see in these scenarios. And then you can choose year to year as to whether or not you want to improve the level of service, whether it's worth the expenditure, whether the current level of service is good. So I think we, we want to let them complete that work first before we begin looking at, before we can tell you whether or not you need to be looking at certain improvements in level of service.
Thank you. Any other questions, council, at this time? Okay, thanks.
Feel free to interrupt as I go. So refined impervious surface, what that results in, we showed this table last time, it's now been updated based upon the, the work with the property appraiser. So again, about 54% of the impervious surface is associated with what we term low-density residential or really single-family homes. The remainder is within the other categories. You can see in total though, we've estimated that you've got about 166 million square feet of impervious located within the city on 33,000 parcels. So that's the updated impervious. In terms of our fee structure, which was the third component of the, the utility, no recommended changes here or refinements. We still believe that charging low-density residential or single-family homes, all the same stormwater fee or one ERU is appropriate, given the distribution. You have a relatively homogeneous distribution of impervious for single-family homes. And again, an ERU is an equivalent, equivalent residential unit, it's just essentially the billing units we use for the stormwater fee. So if it's $10 per ERU, what we're recommending for a high-density residential, which would be a condo, would be $4. As they'd be .4 ERUs. And again, charging all condo units the same. And then when you get to the non-residential, because of the difference in impervious that you can have on those parcels, we would recommend that you base it on their actual impervious surface as multiples of ERUs. So no changes there, we think that that's the most equitable, but yet simple and easy to understand and administer stormwater fee structure.
On a low-density one, is that based on like a square footage? Because how would you get it on a non-residential?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, okay, low-density is a single-family home based on how many square foot? Because how are you going to charge mult, where it says on the non-residential fee based on actual impervious areas as multiples of an ERU? What is an ERU equal to in square footage?
4,500 square feet of impervious, yep. So we looked at the average, the median impervious surface on, on your single-family home is 4,500 square feet. So.
For low-density, it's 10 or fewer units?
Yep.
So if you have a building that has like six units in it, that would be low-density?
It would be, and what, that's coming from the property appraisers data. Essentially, not to get too complicated, but when, those that fall into the high-density are generally the stacked parcels. So they're going to be condo units and things of that sort.
Well, because they're condos that, I mean, in our community, a lot of our condos have less than 10 units per building is what I'm talking about. So if you have six units in a building. Would that building, would the building pay one ERU or would each person, each unit within that building play, pay one?
Each unit would pay one.
Oh, so it is per unit?
It's per unit for the condos.
The rate is determined by the density?
Correct. Yep.
Doesn't seem quite right, actually.
Yeah, and that's, that's an area where we can draw the line in terms of, there are communities when we look at, I'm sorry, jumping ahead here. I believe it's Naples where they have the option of charging per unit or you can do actual impervious. If you wanted to take that type of route. But we need to draw the line somewhere in terms of, when we looked at most non-stacked parcels, they generally had similar impervious surface associated as a single-family home, is what we were finding.
But why the cut at 10 as opposed to 2?
Because that, that's what's in the property appraisers database, that's how they account for it.
That's, in other words, their wording is low den, that's how they define it?
Yes.
Food for thought.
Yep, and we can certainly refine that.
Yeah, because if you have a low condo, connected condo, it would be sprawled out generally instead of going, you'd, you'd rather go up because you don't, you should have less impervious service.
Right, and so if you, right, if you are stacked, the vast majority of condos are stacked units. And they would only pay .4 ERUs per unit. So they would not pay the full ERU per unit. Whereas when we had low-density condos, they were generally those that had, that were horizontal in nature and their impervious was similar to a single-family home.
Fred?
I think that might need some refinement, so looking at how it works for specific units to, before, I mean, we don't have to get into that, but I think that would be.
I'm troubled with one area. We have areas, and I'm, I'm not going to name the developments, but where they have homes including pool decks, they would probably be 10,000 square feet and more. And, and to say that they get the same deal, it's somehow that, I think we ought to look at that truthfully. I don't want to be punitive, but I think that, first of all, if you can have something that big, you can afford to pay, pay them more money anyway. It's the little guy, a, a guy that doesn't have a lot, a high property value might have four or 5,000 square feet of paving and all that. But that, somebody that can afford to build homes and pool decks of 7, 8, 9, 10,000 square feet, I think should be able to pay the freight.
If I may, Councilman Forbes, you're, you're walking down a path that a lot of stormwater utilities will undertake after they're established and as they begin to get a little more refined going forward. We had a community recently that, that took that approach as well right out of the chute. And what happened was, if you look at the dispersal of, let's say, low-density residential, you look at the dispersal of units, the vast majority are sitting over here in this beautiful little bell shape. So they're all sitting there, everybody in there, we're kind of averaging out. Then there's what we call a tail. And that tail, while it's not many properties, has a lot of what you're describing, maybe parcels that, the homes are a little bit bigger, they have a more significant amount of impervious. And one way to go about that is to separate out that tail and assess those individually. I will tell you, that's probably more trouble than it's worth at the outset. It doesn't substantially impact your revenues to any great degree, but it does create a tremendous amount of confusion and angst in the community because you have someone saying, well, wait a second. My neighbor's bill is $100 less than mine, or $50 less than mine, but I swear their driveway's bigger than mine. And you start getting this, this comparison and, and, and it can be a hornet's nest, and we have run into that. My suggestion would be, at the outset, keep it as simple as you reasonably can. Then as the utility establishes and as people get comfortable with the methodology, you could then begin looking at refinements as you go forward. If we get it too complicated coming out of the chute, if we try and, and I don't want to use the phrase overreach, but to be too encompassing, it creates a tremendous amount of confusion. So that is part of our recommendation is to try and keep it as simple as possible and in line with what other stormwater utilities are doing in the state as well.
I, I can appreciate that, but I really, to keep within the concept here, which I think I understand, is that a fee should be based on the, on the, on the basis of the u, use of the system, all right? So all these little differentiations, we have to be sure that the low-density contributes approximately, you know, one unit. And the high-density, when you divide it through the number of units within the building, is, you multiply the number of units by .4 and that should have some relationship to the usage of the stormwater system. And because of the example that I gave earlier, I'm not 100% sure that's the case. But in a general term, I, I totally agree with you that we should keep it as simple as possible. But let's explore whether we're really capturing that with those relationships in rela, for the specific units that we have within the city.
Agreed, and I think what will help you is if we bring you some examples.
Right.
Of how certain parcels of different natures are to be calculated. And then what you may see is, as David mentioned, what the, the city of Naples has is, if you're over here in the multifamily and in the low-density and you don't think that's most appropriate, you think you should be assessed in this category, you have the ability to request that. And that's a way of kind of, of right sizing that. But I think once you see some of those examples drawn out, when we think of low-density condominiums, a lot of times what we forget is, two and three-story condominiums tend to have at-grade parking or garages with guest parking. And there tends to be a lot more impervious with them than you do get kind of a stacked tower condominium. So that all contributes as well. So while the unit size may be smaller, the actual common area impervious can be more significant. So, but, but looking at those specific examples will either give you greater comfort or point us to a different or better solution.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Just a short comment, I, I basically agree with where Tim is going. I believe there are stormwater utilities in Florida that actually do the entire calculation by impervious surface. In other words, literally every house is figured out and quantified. This goes the other way, it's kind of keep it simple. And I, I agree with you, there's an issue about breakpoints perhaps with respect to low and high. But I think keeping it simple and explaining it to the public is a beneficial way to go. Rather than literally measuring everybody's pool, everybody's driveway and that type of thing.
Yeah, I guess to that point, just one follow-up, we, we, this is part of the process and this is great feedback and we're not, we're saying this is recommended, we can certainly modify it. There are communities that say, if you're a single-family home, you're one ERU, and then everybody else is based on their actual impervious. And the way you'd handle condos that way is you'd say, okay, you're a condo complex, we got your total impervious, we're going to calculate a fee and then we're going to divide that by the number of units within that condo complex. That's a common approach in Florida. Those, that would be probably the most common outside of this approach. Under this approach, we can tell every single condo unit, we don't have, you don't have a different fee if you're in this condo versus this condo, you can tell every unit that you pay, you know, .4 ERUs. That's the benefit of keeping it simple under this approach. But that delineation between what's high and low, I agree, is, is a little bit in that gray area and can be, can be defined if we continue with this approach.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so we're going to wrap up this section, just talk about what we're coming up with based on the updated level of service discussions, the updated impervious surface. We're now calculating the fee. And if we were to cover the operating expenditures with the stormwater fee, that would come out to $26 per year, per ERU. So every single-family home would be assessed $26 per year, that would generate the $883,000, which is currently funded from the general fund. To fund the capital maintenance, repair and replacement, that would be an additional $9, would generate the $300,000, which is currently funded from the gas tax. And then to fund the $500,000 for potential capital would be $15 per year, per ERU. So if you add all of those up, that would be $50 per year, per ERU if you were to fund all three. Obviously, as I've mentioned before, you have the option to fund one or, or any of these expenditures.
Just a quick question about the gas tax.
Yep.
The $300,000 that we're taking out of the gas tax, is that the minimum, the maximum that we can take? And what I mean by that is, right now, that gas tax is taxed, is being levied on anybody who gets gas in Benita Spring, whether they're a visitor or a resident.
Correct.
It seems like to me if we charge our residents for it, we're, we're taking some of that away that, you know, visitors may have to pay for in that tax. What else could we use that tax for? And I guess that goes back to Matt and Arlene.
Yeah. New road construction.
More road construction?
More road construction and more maintenance on roadways.
Is that just a number we pick out of there, Matt? The 300,000, or is that the max we can pull out of the gas tax for stormwater?
There are some differentiations that honestly, our finance director could probably speak to the nuances of the different restrictions within the gas tax. But the bottom line is, based on what our expenses were on the more restrictive pieces of the gas tax, you know, we were able to assign some maintenance activities. And so we've gone through with STAN-TAC and said, look, those maintenance activities could be reallocated because they primarily are the stormwater component of a roadway maintenance. And so that would free those dollars up then to, to be in the construction side.
It could also be freed up or also could be, lack of better terms, doubled. We could charge the $9 and get 300 and still go back to the gas tax and get another 300 if we, if we see a need?
Can you, can you repeat the question?
Well, listen. Well, that's what I mean, if we, if we, if we charge the $9 to offset this gas tax at a later date, we could come back and say, we see another project we want to do and pull it out of the gas tax again.
Right.
Okay.
But you, you see this as a stable, whatever you decide, a stable fee? And it, it isn't assessed on an annual basis like we do our budget? And for all these expenditures that are already existing, we, on an annual basis, we look at the projects, we say, let's do this, let's do that or whatever, except for the maintenance. But you see it as a stable fee, so it wouldn't change from year to year?
Well, you just, just as any other user, for you, you'd have the opportunity during the budget process to evaluate how the fee should be set. Generally, stormwater utility fees around the state are very relatively stable, there may be modest increases as operating costs go up and things like that. But it is certainly, it's, it's different than pulling together general fund dollars for a specific project in that you know you'd have $500,000 if you were to fund the, the potential capital every single year.
So conceptually, the, for A and B, which are already in the budget, so to speak. When we do our budget, conceptually, we would take it out of the general fund budget or we would exclude it, separate it out so you wouldn't double count it. I mean, we would, our expenditures would go down by, you know, a million something when we do our budget, is that correct?
They would, they would be transferred out of, of your budget and, and then accounted for through the stormwater utility.
And typically for C, we have our CIP and all that stuff, but as, right, that would come out of the CIP now?
It would, it would free up the dollars that you have in the CIP for those projects.
Right, but we would see that $500,000 currently in the CIPs.
Correct.
All right, so that's where we get it in the current budget. So we would do the same thing, but we would separate that out in some ways that would be allocated to the revenues that we raised through the utility. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Generally, this would be set up as an enterprise fund or a special revenue fund, so it's accounted for separately, can only be used for stormwater expenditures. There's a lot of transparency there in that on an annual basis, you can see exactly the sum which we're generating, and these are what the projects and the expenses that it's used for.
So if people don't want to raise taxes, you know the bad words, we would just keep it stable and still have the same expenditures, but we would get it through a different kind of revenue stream. Is that correct?
Provided you account for it in your budget process, yes.
Mm-hmm.
And that would continue to be a policy decision. As they've stated before, we will continue on the city, on our staff's evaluation of current systems. So this is a reflection of the today maintenance. And so as we determine that there are, as we indicated through Irma, that there are infrastructure needs, those will be brought through during budget-
Correct.
...and that would be the time for the policy decision on where you see the fee.
To decide whether you wanted to have a fee increase to take care of these identified projects that we, is likely to come out of this assessment that you're doing citywide. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we talked about this in our first presentation, just how some other communities, cities, what they charge for stormwater. So you could see Cape Coral, they're currently at $111 per ERU per year. Fort Myers is at 55, Naples at 160 per ERU. What we've come up with is anywhere between $9, if you just do the capital, up to 50 if you were to do all three of those. So it gives you a sense for how you'd compare it to the other communities. So now we're going to talk about credits, and we spoke about this a little bit last time, in terms of the opportunity to offer credits for HOAs or commercial properties that actually manage stormwater onsite. And so what a stormwater fee credit is, just an ongoing reduction in the fee that's charged to what we would term a qualifying property in return for qualifying stormwater management. So if you have a pond or something of that sort, it's in recognition of that. And the credit is recognizing that that onsite or offsite stormwater management reduces the cost to the city. If you had to manage those ponds, or if they didn't have those ponds, there would be more cost essentially to the city. But when we talk about credits, and this gets into some of the public education and understanding, one of the common misconceptions is, within a community, is that, "Well, if I'm in an HOA and we manage all of our own stormwater, why should I pay a fee?" That's a very, very common question and a common concern. And the reality is, is that you have an interconnected system. The stormwater that's in a pond eventually leaves that community and enters the wider backbone system. And so it's very difficult to actually contain the stormwater onsite. You have a, you know, an interconnected stormwater system. As well as the fact that if you want to travel the roadways to get to your community, the city has to manage the backbone system to keep the roadways clear. And so it's, I guess it's false in the concept of thinking that you can manage all the stormwater and that you have no impact on the system and you shouldn't pay anything. So that's generally why we look at not having a full credit against the stormwater charge. So when we look at the credits, what we've come up with in our initial credit calculations are, taking the, credits would be applied to the operating expenditures, because the capital expenditures, the potential capital, and the maintenance on the system are generally done in the backbone system or system-wide. And so where we see the potential for reduced cost is on the operating side. And when we look at those operating expenditures, we can break those into two components, those that are regulatory in nature or work on the backbone system. And so management of a pond and an HOA doesn't impact those costs, so there's about $430,000 of the 883 that really we can't credit against because those are our backbone. And then the non-baseline or non-backbone system operating costs are about $453,000. And so when we look at the potential costs that the city would incur if they had to manage ponds and things of that sort, that ranges between $140 to $453,000 of that pot of funds. And so what we've come up with for credits would be a potential credit of between 15% and up to 50% of the operating costs. And I understand this is not the easiest concept to wrap your head around, probably the one of the more complicated ones, but it's essentially the avoided cost that the city does not incur because people are taking action on their properties. And so the way that that converts into looking at the recommended credits, at least initially, is what we would look at is really two different credits, a Level 1 and a Level 2. And Level 1 would be if you have a detention basin, a retention basin, best management practices. So a good example would be an HOA with a South Florida Water Management District permit. What we've calculated is that there should be a 15% credit on the operating component of the stormwater fee. If you go above and beyond that, and you exceed the permit requirements, and this would be somebody like a San Carlos Estates, which is doing a significant amount of stormwater work within the community, you could get a credit up to 50%. And San Carlos would be, given the level that they're doing, that would be, in our opinion, worthy of a 50% credit on the operating component. And then the third component is just because of the state statutes in Florida, if you are a bona fide agricultural parcel, property with an NPDS permit, an environmental resource permit, the state does not allow you to charge stormwater fees, so they would be exempt from that. I believe there aren't very many parcels in the city that would qualify for that, but to comply with the state statutes, we would have to exempt them.
From the operating portion.
Correct. No, I'm sorry, from everything.
From everything.
You just cannot charge.
The third category is everything?
Yes. Yep.
Where would we, where would we recoup that?
So essentially, what, all of these credits, we need to account for the fact that this would be a reduction, and we want this to be a self-supporting system. So the fees that we've calculated, we know how many HOAs are out there, we know San Carlos Estates, we've built that into the fees. So our estimates that we're calculating are assuming-
Of the 9 to 50 is built in with these credits that you've-
Correct. Yep. There's about 9,000 parcels that are in HOAs that we believe would get the 15% credit. There's about 4,000 condos, there's 519 parcels in San Carlos Estates. We've assumed all of those-
Okay.
...and factored all of that in. And I just do want to say, what we would recommend out of the gate would be that the HOAs would immediately get that credit, that you would make them apply for it. But over time, and we'll work with staff to come up with a credit manual that would require them to demonstrate that they're doing maintenance on those facilities, to continue to be able to get the credit going forward. And so that would be part of the next phase of our analysis.
And we recognize, this is one of the places where things can get rather confusing. So let me see if I can break it down into three example categories. Example number one, you live in a single-family home, and your water from your lot goes into a swale or pipe within the public right-of-way. So after each rainfall, the runoff from your property goes into something that the city maintains. You don't maintain it, you know, it's the city's responsibility. They are totally dependent upon the city's stormwater system for their runoff. They would be charged a full ERU or a .4 ERU. There would be no eligibility for credit. Example number two, Benita Bay, obviously a managed stormwater system within their community. They take care of their lake banks, they're responsible for cleaning out their catch basins. These are the things the city does, for example, number one. But they do that within their community. Therefore, they would be eligible for something like a 15% credit. Why not more? Because, trust me, they're going to look at their budget, and they're going to say, "We spend a lot of money on water management." Well, that's because you have a lot of lakes. And a lot of those lakes are aesthetic, but they all are part of the water management system. But as the mayor has indicated, all you need to do is walk after a heavy rain to where the outfall is for any of these communities, and you will see water leaving the community. That water goes into a system that is maintained and responsibility by the city. So they are, their water, while they temporarily hold and temporarily manage it onsite, they need the downstream system to work, or else they will not drain. Therefore, they get a 15% credit. But then you look at a community like San Carlos Estates. They recognize they had a problem, they created their own taxing district, they don't just manage, I believe they even pump, don't they? They don't pump, okay. But they have gone above and beyond what a typical South Florida Water Management District permit would require to solve their own problems. So they are doing more than just managing. Therefore, they should be considered and potentially eligible for a higher credit. Where the bottom line is, is that nobody should get more than a 50% credit, and the reason is this: We all drive the roadways. We all need the major roadways to be safe, clear, and passable after a storm event to the greatest degree possible for public safety, health, and welfare. We all share in that, we all benefit from that. And not to be morose about it, but we've heard about, and Mr. DeWitt can speak to this better than I can, but the, I think it's magic, or there's a six or seven-minute window in a cardiac event, that if an emergency response is delayed by 30 seconds, could mean the difference between life and death. Standing water represents that danger after a storm. So your responsibility, and one you carry very well, is maintaining those streets passable for public health, safety, and welfare. Everyone benefits in that, everyone therefore should share in that, and that's where the 50% comes in, that is your backbone system. So hopefully, that helps give some attachments to how a credit system would apply and why.
Tim, there's an ele, Tim? Hi, Tim. So there's an element of water quality in this as well as stormwater?
There is.
There is, okay. So we have some thinking to do, because, I mean, you have some communities that may have a stormwater system that don't have a water quality system, meaning septic.
Yes.
And you may have other communities where you characterize them as Level 1, but they go right to tide. So they don't go into the city's control system. Leaving aside the fact, there is a quality point, so enough said, I just wanted to make the point, it's not that simple.
Correct. In communities where they have discharge directly into, for example, an esterine system that the city does not maintain, they would be eligible for the 50% credit as opposed to the 15%.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Because remember, that whole aspect of public roadways, public access, you know, nobody stays within the gates of their community 100% of the time. We all leave. And when we do, we expect our roads to be passable and our stormwater system to function, and we all benefit by it.
Well, I would just say about Benita Bay, and the context, this is a community that tax-wise is a major donor to the city-
Yes.
...and no problem being a major donor, so it's not like, but that whole system goes to tide.
I would suggest that this is a recommended starting point-
Okay.
...and that you have an ability to have, in essence, a degree of sliding scale between 15 and 50%. If someone can show that they're doing more than the base, then they should be eligible for up to 50%. And there are certainly issues that may warrant that. At this high-level stage-
Right.
...this is where we start, and with the numbers we're talking about per ERU, it's not a hugely significant number, not to minimize it-
Right.
...but it certainly helps that, allow the system to get legs and begin to make those types of individual evaluations. But we would have time between now and September to look at some of those as well. Fred, do you have a question?
I'm just looking for a clarification or a question. Let's say I have a home, and you've got one ERU. Now, are we saying that if my home is inside an HOA, that I will minimally get a 15% knockdown on whatever that fee is, or up to 50%?
If you're within an HOA, that has a responsibility for maintenance of a permitted water management system, then yes, sir.
Minimum of 15, but if you prove you're doing a little more, you could go up to 50.
Yes, sir. But I'll tell you, the folks that are going to be at 15%, and this is true of my neighborhood, you know, yeah, we were eligible to get the credit, except that they hadn't catched a clean, they hadn't cleaned out a catch basin in the whole time I'd lived there. So you assume they're doing what they're supposed to be doing to start with. But that's the credit manual that David referred to, is, you as a city also have an expectation that they will perform those maintenance activities, and over a reasonable period of time, they would, someone like a Benita Bay or any CDD that has the record-keeping, they can show that quite easily. But most small HOAs don't even know they're supposed to be cleaning out the catch basins in their own community. So your staff will help educate them, and over time, they can show, "Hey, here's a receipt from, you know, once every five years, we clean out our catch basins. Fantastic, you get to keep your credit." So that's kind of where it goes. It encourages proper behavior consistent with your permit requirements.
Oh, go ahead.
In my district, I have the privilege of representing Citrus Park, which is a total different thing, San Carlos Estates, and Pelican Landing, all right? I think each of them would have kind of a special case. Now, is it, they're asking me what we're doing, and is there someone that, like, one representative from each one of those could maybe contact somebody to say, "Where would we fall into this, you know, even if it's not settled, or is it too early to do that?"
I think at this stage, we're a little bit early.
Okay.
What I would suggest is that, you know, ask them to have representatives or residents come to the public information meetings that we'll be going over with you in just a moment. We've got three of them scheduled. That's going to help them report back to their neighborhoods as to what the program is. As we go forward, should the council decide to proceed, you would not be setting a final budget number until September. So that may give us time to look at a couple of these and say, uniquely different circumstances, whether or not they would qualify for something north of 15 and up to the 50. We do not have included in our scope a community-wide assessment, neighborhood by neighborhood, to that degree. Part in reason because your staff is kind of doing that kind of an assessment right now, getting their arms around each one of these out there, and that is going to be a lengthy process. So I think, we don't want to promise that we can cover that community-wide, but can we look at a handful of special cases to determine if there's, something is warranted there?
So the idea is that they should probably interact with staff, because you're the ones that are going to kind of classify what's going on in that community? Is that true, or no?
I think-
Not right now, but eventually?
Yeah, I think it's a little premature. Really, if we can get to the next slide, and we're going to talk about the workshops, which are upcoming. And I think we really need to hear from the public, you know, what is the general appetite for these concepts that they brought forward? But as we work, you know, as we see what the next steps are there, then, you know, I think we can work on some of those issues.
Because I agree with, I mean, I'm in Pelican Landing, I have the same issue that Benita Bay has, because I don't believe we go to the system. I believe we go out to the tide, but maybe that's a problem in and of itself, you know? But I'm going to ask our CDD, because they do have records and they seem to know how it works.
And so that we can keep on task, as we advise council, we have a methodology for this assessment, and we're working from the east end of the city to the west end of the city. And just, we understand there's special cases, but we didn't want to get a situation where we jumped from community and not keep our path moving forward.
No, I agree totally. I just was, because they're asking me, now I can tell them something. Thank you.
Real quick, Tim, before you go on, it has to do with, just a quick comment question, and to staff also. So is it going to be up to each individual HOA, like Ben back there with his HOA, to come to the city, or is it going to be assumed that they're doing what they're supposed to do, and they're getting the credit? Which way is it going to go?
Right out of the chute, we recommend you make the assumption that if they have a district permit, that they are operating in compliance with that permit, and you provide the credit.
Okay.
And then a credit manual will be provided over time, and over an acceptable period of time, so it does not create an undue burden on any community, you will try and ensure that they are performing the maintenance activities that they're required to do.
So we'll find them through the Southwest Florida Water Management just permitting side of it?
It will be consistent with the work that staff's doing now, that we can determine which of these communities are abiding by their permits. As we discussed, there are some legal issues that we might have to look at as well, but this will be another tool in the toolbox as an incentive for them to bring their facilities up to current maintenance as well, understanding that there is a risk that they could lose the credit if they're not following that permit. But as we discussed, this is also going to be a big task with Neighborhood Services, but the first step is always education, because a lot of folks, as we said before, do not know where the public system ends and where the private system begins. So that's our first task in this, is, and continue to work with them to understand that.
I think the shorthand to avoid the city starting out from a process where they're getting so granular that basically the program can't move forward, is that we're going to start with an honor system. Everyone's going to be assumed to be doing what they're supposed to be doing, what they outwardly appear to be doing. And then as we get into the process more, we'll start to identify those people who need to work out, and then they'll have an opportunity to correct before their fees get adjusted.
I.e. the carrot versus the stick. Moving into the public workshops, we have three workshops scheduled. workshops scheduled. As geographically diverse in the community as we could get, there are not a lot of venues out there that can hold fifty or more people. But on February 7th, we'll be at Benita Springs High School in the evening, on February 11th, at Benita Springs Charter School, and on February 19th, at the Benita Springs Public Library. We will be working with your communications staff to make sure this gets out to the greatest degree possible through email, social media. And we will be tapping your staff and your resources as much as possible to make notice of these meetings. And the meetings will each be basically an informational presentation. Many of the elements that we've shared with you here today will form the basis of the presentation, followed by a question and answer period. And there are always three types of questions we get. Those we know the answers to, those we don't, and those that absolutely stun us. But we will, we will work to get answers on the second one, and on the third one, usually we, we can recover from those. But our goal, basically, in those workshops is to inform and educate the public so that they can properly evaluate and understand what's being proposed. It is not our job, nor is it our role, to sell anyone on anything. These are, these are informational workshops. This is a tool being provided to the city, to the benefit, hopefully, of its citizens. But that, our, our role strictly is informational, and that's how we will approach it.
And the city clerk will be emailing you those dates and locations.
Okay. Fred, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm troubled by the last site. I mean, that's small. And the last thing we need to do is have another workshop, where we got something that's a hot topic and have not enough capacity to hold the people.
And we, we do recognize that. That is the smallest of the three sites, as far as capacity goes.
Can't we get another site?
About the Flyer House on Biddy Grand, yeah?
Flyer House.
Flyer Headquarters. They always do it.
Yeah, we, I mean, as long as it's available. I know we're doing a DOA hearing there, the twen- when is that, the twenty-something?
It's coming up.
Yeah, February 20th. But if it's available, I can check the dates. If the 19th is set in stone, I mean, we can change that. I mean, I can check it real quick.
I don't believe we have reached out in the community yet with these dates. So if we can hold the 19th, and it's available, and we can change the venue and allow for greater capacity, we're in. So, yes, sir, if you would kindly get back with staff and let us know.
We'll let you know before you leave.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Even if it, even if it isn't, there's churches that got more capacity. I just think we need to make sure that we got more than enough capacity, because we don't wanna, we don't want to get the public upset, because they come and they can't even be accommodated on something we're gonna try and sell them that we want to do.
And we did, capacity was an issue, and I will tell you also, an issue is, is cost, whether or not the city has a budget to rent halls. Some of them, there were some places that had capacity, but they wanted to charge a significant sum. So, you know, I'm not talking about churches necessarily, but we've worked with your staff to try and identify the best locations. What I'm hearing from you is, let's make sure, we, I will tell you, the national average attendance at public workshops is nine to ten. That's a depressing number, but this is a community, as my pastor says, what makes Southwest Florida so wonderful is that we have a bunch of Type A personalities. And what makes it so difficult is we have a bunch of Type A personalities. So, so, you know, we do expect a higher-than-average participation from the citizens of Benita Springs. And so we'll do our best to take another look at these locations and make sure, I think if we plan for it to accommodate, you know, as many as a hundred, that is a very significant turnout for a stormwater workshop, based on our experience. And I don't want to underestimate the interest level of your citizens. So, we'll take a look at that February 19th date, and we will review the 7th and 11th as to maximum seating capabilities, and do our best to, to make sure we don't underplan. Yes, ma'am. All are planned in the evening. There are some communities that have better turnouts in some locations for daytime workshops. If you would like to have one in the daytime versus the evening, we can take a look at that as well. Most communities will plan them in the evenings, but like I said, we do have some that literally have experience and have told us, no, we need to have at least one in the daytime, because this particular area, that's when they're gonna come out. So if you know that, and we can incorporate that, we, we certainly would look for that input, input from you as well today.
I'd encourage you and staff on the public outreach to be clear on the context of this, not just on the mechanics of it. Starting with, we, we have a developing reputation as the city that floods, that impacts property values, that infects quality of life. And some indication, it's something Councilman Corumba mentioned a year ago, of what type of projects are needed. We know what those are. The average citizen doesn't know. There obviously are many more. The fact that we haven't received any money, in spite of efforts from the state of Florida, from the legislature last year, the fact that we need matching funds for the FEMA grant applications that we have, the fact that we have in the city very limited financial resources. I think that context, as an informational matter, is extremely important, because the average guy, I gave a presentation yesterday, and I, and I showed the tax bill for all property taxpayers in Benita Springs, it's actually 2017, was one hundred and fifty million dollars, of which the city receives eight. People don't understand that. They don't understand how small our operating budget is, and the financial pressure we're on. And I think, as an informational matter, if I were a consumer, and I were a member of the public, I would want to know that.
I find it interesting, and again, I, I appreciate that. We tend to break it into three segments. The first is informational.
Right, and that, right.
Without, again, trying to fear monger, that's not our role, but just to state the facts as they exist.
Right.
And the challenges that the city faces. And staff certainly is aware of those and can help us populate that list even more so than we have.
That's good.
To educate the public on what the challenges you face are on their behalf. The second part of that then becomes discussion of, of what is a utility, kind of an educational component. And we do talk about what the potential fees are. We want people to see that on the front end. We don't want them to be able to calculate it if they have a commercial property, so people can understand what this means. But I find it interesting, if you look at your tax bill, and you look at how much of your taxes go to the city operations of Benita Springs versus your trash collection, it's sobering. It's sobering how you have to dice the onion to provide the services that, that you provide. So, so yes, again, we, we try not to fall into a sales pitch on this at all. This is ultimately a decision of the public in this council, and we just want to be facilitators of information. But you're correct, I think providing background information is an important part of those public workshops.
What was the learning experienced, Tim, coming out of Collier? You touched on this before, but what, it got too complicated, or?
First of all, we know they had a quality consultant. So, you know, that's, that's not the issue. No, in Collier, it was interesting, you know, you can always armchair quarterback what occurs. And I think the value there is that, for Collier County, we had a majority of the commission that was really so strongly concerned about the stormwater issues. And we provided them with multiple levels of service, okay? And so, there were five, I think, five levels of service. And they were at the, what we called the bottom level of service, and we get, surprising to all of us, they shot for A. They, they, they reached for A. And while that is an admirable and commendable approach, and I think they understood the need, and they looked at the dollars, there's an unintended consequence of that. And that is, for those properties that were gonna be paying more than one ERU, and we had that tail issue in Collier as well, in the eastern portion of the county, I think the two lessons learned were, number one, crawl before you, you know, walk, and walk before you run. So let's keep it simple, and let's, let's, let's take it in measured steps. Number two is, look for the anomalies. In Collier County, a lot of large lot property owners in the eastern part of the county were con- were convinced that their stormwater never left their property. They were convinced that, and actually not even convinced, but some of them even provided testimony saying, "I like it when my property floods. I've got wetlands on my property. I like the standing water." That was a unique part of the county that, that should have been dealt with differently. And I don't think, because a lot of those property owners were in that tail, and they were assessed individually, which meant higher bills, you know, that was an unraveling. And so here, what, one of the reasons we're really focusing on a simplistic approach of kind of treating everyone the same right out of the chute, is that you don't have that unintended consequence of that tail section unraveling ninety percent or ninety-eight percent of the good work that, that goes into this program.
Thank you.
Are we at the end of the first quarter, or how we doing? Halftime show?
We, we are actually getting close to the ten-yard line.
Okay.
And we're gonna drive it in. Here we go.
Are we running or passing?
I'm always run first.
All right, buddy.
Okay. So, schedule, this is where we sit today. You can see, we're starting to get into wrapping up the Phase One feasibility report, if you will. Pretty much what you've seen today is the content of what we would construe to be a feasibility report. We will give you a written document on that. But now we're going into the public information program, and then preliminary budget. So we are tracking on schedule, as predicted. And here is where we're gonna feed into the one decision we're gonna ask you to make today. Right now, we don't know if this council's gonna proceed with the creation of a stormwater utility. And I think everyone needs to understand that. However, there is a timeframe that is required by state statute for public notice of the intent to utilize a, something other than property taxes. So if you want to have the ability, in the 2019, 2020 tax year, to consider a stormwater utility and a uniform method of collection, you have to let the public know very early. So what that means is, that prior to March 1st, you have to advertise for successive weeks, and you have to provide notice that you're gonna be considering the adoption of uniform method, uniform method of assessment. Your last hearing in, in February is February 20th. So if we back that up to four successive weeks, you're gonna need to be advertising on the 23rd. So, we stand here today, and we're gonna ask you to do something-
Twenty-third of-
Of January. So, the reason why we're bringing this up today, and the reason why it's time-critical is, because of that requirement, all we're asking you to do is to give direction to staff, if you so choose, to advertise of your intent. But I would like to, while it may have to say intent, what we're talking about is leaving the door open to consider a stormwater utility as part of the next budget fiscal year. It is not a commitment. It says we're mov- we're, we're gonna continue discussing this, moving forward. All it is is saying that by September 18th, which is when you have a budgetary requirement, you're going to make a decision, and this is one of the options you are considering. So, our request of you today is to direct staff to provide a notice of intent to be advertised by January 23rd, of to use a uniform method of collection. And we want to emphasize to the public, and everyone who is listening, that this is not a binding decision. This is simply keeping your options open to further consider this. The alternative would be to not do this, and then push off this potential for a year. So that's the sensitivity of the time that we're, we're facing by state statute. By doing this, the advertising actually may help draw people to the public workshops to gain more information. And then, so your next steps are, we're asking today to give that direction to staff, and legal counsel has at least been engaged in, in putting that notice together. At the February 6th council meeting, we'll provide another update to you. It will be much shorter than this one, luckily for you. And then we have the public workshops on the 7th, the 11th, and the 19th, tentatively scheduled now. We'll be confirming those. And then on February 20th, would be a public hearing to adopt the resolution of intent, allowing the option to use the tax bill. So you would publicly advertise, starting in January, and then on February 20th, you would adopt a resolution, again, only identifying this as an option for the council to consider. You would not have to make that decision finally, whether to create a stormwater utility or not, until September 18th. So-
Mr. Mayor.
Fred.
I so move that we direct staff to do this advertisement, so that it's all done in the proper manner by the 23rd, or sooner.
I second.
Okay. And a motion and a second, is there further discussion on that?
Mike?
Yeah, I, personally, I, I don't feel doing the fee is the right way for the taxpayer. I, I think the most transparent way for the taxpayer is just to have everything in the military. You know, they get proper notice when we want to raise it. I, I just think this is a backdoor way of adding more taxes onto, you know, your average taxpayer. Looking at some average house values in my district, this is gonna equate anywhere from a thirty percent increase to a hundred and eighty-four percent increase, and I found some that are even higher, what they're paying the city right now. So, I think it should just stay in the military. They get proper notice that way. If we need the money, we should look at raising the military. So, I, I won't be voting for it.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Present. But I will say no.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Passes five-two.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, Fred.
Well, I, I would like-
Peter.
-you all to take what Councilman Gibson said into account. And it could be that there can be some, we still keep it low, but maybe there's some way that the value or something can be cranked into this, so we don't cause it to have as bad effect.
The one last item I'll leave you with actually builds on what Councilman Gibson indicated. And in previous meetings with each of you, we had talked about the possibility of, if you do create a stormwater utility, basically taking the money out of this bucket and putting it in this bucket. Not that it being a new total on-the-top fee. That option still remains available to this body. When we meet on February 6th, I would like to ask you to consider that at, on that date, because we always get this question when we do public workshops, you know, is the council gonna reduce my ad valorem taxes? If we create a stormwater utility, is the council gonna reduce my ad valorem taxes? We always get that question. In a communities where we don't have an answer, it leads to a lot of angst and concern, which then becomes, well, this is just a money grab, a new tax. That's the political side. Now, we're, we're not here as political advisors, but I am here as a realist. And that's something that occurs in the community quite frequently. So on February 6th, if this body were to take a straw poll as to whether or not you'd be willing to consider, during the budget process, a partial or full reduction in ad valorem to offset the cost of the, what the stormwater fee would generate, that may give some purchase for those folks who have that concern. And, and so I only ask you to consider it because I recognize the politics of how your decision-making goes, and that there are gonna be many in the community that feels Mr. Gibson has expressed, that maybe this isn't the right way, or maybe you're just tacking things on. And I don't mean to put words in your mouth, sir, but I understand the sentiment. And so I would ask that you may want to give a little bit of, of light, if you will, to the community as to what your considerations may be in the future from a budgetary standpoint. And that will help people, I think, try and put this in perspective. So-
And I think that's a discussion for these workshops. I think it's very critically important for people to understand what this is, how it potentially could be funded. Is it a new tax? Why is it not a new tax? Why is my bill gonna go from ten dollars, as Councilman Gibson said, to potentially a hundred and seventy dollars, if that's an example? And why is the person in Benita Bay whose bill is ten dollars, why is that only going up to, whatever, twenty-five dollars, because they have X number of tax credits? So, that's for these workshops, to be decided, but we need to make that crystal clear.
Yes, sir. We will carry that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, yeah, Peter, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one thing I'm gonna be talking to our council about is the possibility of a referendum on this, to take this to the public, let the public be educated, and let the public make a decision with respect to this, and a vote, as opposed to just a few people up here saying, "I'm against taxes, I'm for taxes," that kind of stuff. I think we can have a much better conversation with the public at large. So I'm gonna be chatting with our attorney about whether it can be done that way.
Do we think it can be done in time, because of the, we'd had to do it during the primary, correct?
It'd be at an interesting period of time, wouldn't it?
No, I'm just saying, because if, if it's gotta be a final decision on September-
Well, that's what I wanna, I don't wanna hold this whole show up here. We have people waiting to talk about the zoning. And I'm not looking for a view from, even a statement from Derek today. I just wanna, I'm just telling people, I'm gonna be talking to them about it.
Right. And the August primary could allow that.
Yeah, that's why I was just looking for a timeframe.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I'd like, all right.
But we have to advertise.
Yeah, that's what I want to talk to him about. And I like it at a time when the most people in Benita Springs will be participating.
Counsel, anything else? Wonderful. Thanks, guys. Okay. That was a comprehensive and engaging conversation. Thank you. We're gonna move on to item 7D, receive a presentation by the Board for the Land Use Hearings and Adjustments and Zoning Board of Appeals, and this is green sheet 19010117, or 017, excuse me. Mr. Kurlander, good morning.
Morning.
How are you?
Hope you're all doing well. My name is Larry Kurlander. I'm the chairman of the zoning board, and I live in Benita Springs. During the workshop that was held nearly a year ago now, we decided to take, at your direction, to review the land development code. We came before you a month ago, and you directed us to look at Estero and Naples and report back to you with a plan. We have a plan. Normally- Normally, we, we appointed a subcommittee that was chaired by Richard Donnelly. It was with Robert and Serpy, and James Worcester were the subcommittee that looked at this in more depth, and then reported back to the full zoning board, and the zoning board unanimously approved what we're going to show you today. So we're going to ask you to approve a framework for going forward. But first, let me talk a little bit about what we learned in Naples and Estero. First, Naples. I went there with John Dolmer, and in Estero, we were joined by the city manager. There were two enlightening meetings. The, in Naples, their process is totally the reverse of ours. They front-load everything. When a developer files their application, it doesn't have to be for a planned development, for anything, they have to provide the city with engineering drawings, full engineering drawings, full landscape plan, full site plan. It is very, very, very onerous. But the developers are doing fine with it. They've adjusted to it. In addition, in Naples, they have a design review board, and so there's a very elongated process, but it works very well for them. Estero, Estero is, has a land development code that's similar to ours. And what they have done is they have retained an outside firm, Clarion Corporation, to redo their total land development code at a cost of $250,000. They estimate the final cost will be $260,000 at this stage, very close to the budgeted number. Still, a lot of money to totally redo. They face the same problem we do, in that they have a hodgepodge that's developed over time and is desperately needed of redoing. They also have in Estero, a, a design review board. And that design review board, they've had problems with. There were serious conflicts of interest with the first design review board. They replaced the majority of the, of the members to try and deal with that. And they have a new design review board, which I will describe as a runaway board. It's runaway because they think that they're the policymakers, not the council. And I, I think that you're treading on dangerous waters with that. I think that design review boards in general will work well in large municipalities. In small municipalities, where you want someone who's current and licensed to sit on your board, there's going to be massive conflicts of interest. You're not going to get away with that in a small city. If you went and you, you said, "Well, we'll, we'll take people who don't live in the city," which Estero has done, I'm not sure that's a good, good idea either. Our proposal, after reviewing Estero, after reviewing Naples, is quite modest, and I think it is more in tune with what you want. What we are proposing are three buckets of conceptual submittals, conceptual submittals, not engineering submittals. The first bucket would be, and I'll let John Dolmer talk about this a little bit more, but the three buckets are pretty simple and straightforward. Architectural, site plan, landscaping. Now, within each bucket, we, we do have an outline, which John will talk about. But today, what we're asking you to do is to approve our conceptual plan. So we go to the next step and start to flesh out each of the three buckets and the elements within those three buckets. We would then report back to you when we have fully fleshed out bucket number one, which is architectural, to see, are, are we going down the road you want us to? You can make any changes you want, of course. You can eliminate, add to, whatever you see fit, of course. Then we come back with bucket number two, and ultimately bucket number three, and then come back with the minor code revisions that would be necessary to accomplish this. But these are all submittal requirements. That's all. And they are conceptual. So I don't know how it would be characterized by the architects. But I think we would be closer to the 30% architectural than the 60% architectural. So it's, it's very minimal. Ultimately, it's removing from the back end of the process, moving it forward. So there's not a lot of difference. I, I think we, we have more clarity. We learned a lot by going to Naples, and Estero was very helpful. And we would urge you to approve our conceptual drawing approach. This is only for planned developments. Do you have any questions?
Counsel?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve and a second. Is there further discussion?
It looks like we do have some stakeholders out there. I wondered if anybody wanted to, if we'd entertain comments.
We also have our staff that has a presentation, which I think-
I was going to say, I think John, I think it would help to see what John's come up with, so you guys can visualize before I even comment.
Yeah, my motion was not to cut staff off as much as to get it on the table.
Morning, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Deputy Mayor, not to try to snatch defeat out of the jaws of victory, I'll just go quickly through this presentation, just to outline exactly what we're doing. As the zoning board chair provided a lot of detail in setting this up, we did talk to Naples and Estero and found a lot of what they have submitted to them as part of their applications was, I'll say at least in the direction of what I've heard this council desire, they want to see as well. And the reason why we brought these examples back was so at least you could see how these would play out. We're very aware that putting a list together is not going to be very effective in trying to convey this information to you. This is, this is the site plan that you will see in the village of Estero. It is actually a site plan that was reviewed and approved. What you'll see down here is that it provides direction and a little context in addition to the plan itself. You'll also notice that there are, there's greater detail in this plan that you've seen in a lot of plans submitted to Benita Springs, in the fact that the water management area is dimensioned a little more accurately. Parking spaces are dimensioned and located with landscape ceilings and other detail that you normally don't see at the zoning level here. This is also a nice exhibit that they require, and it requires that colorized plan, so you can see where the, the impervious and the pervious spaces are, but also in relation to the surrounding area. So their site plan is required to be imposed upon an aerial, so you can not only see what is on the site, but how that site is going to impact adjacent properties as well. Everybody that has seen this has, has been very appreciative of it. This exhibit shows the architectural elevation of, of a building with the landscape plan imposed in front. Why this is important is because while you see architectural plans, and you see in some applications more detail as what a building will look like, what we have not seen so far is what you will actually see from the street. And that detail is going to be looking through the landscaping that, that you require. This allows you to, to adjust that landscaping so that architectural focal points are more clear, and certain other portions of a building, if they need to be hidden or disguised, can be done at this stage.
That's what we didn't have on the storage unit-
That is correct.
-on US 41 that everybody went nuts about.
Yes, sir. That is exactly right.
Okay.
This is part of one of their architectural renderings. It, it doesn't come out very well on this slide. It does look better in real life. The reason why I like this is because when they start looking at multi-tenant buildings, or buildings where they're not exactly sure where they're going to go with a potential user, or when it will be developed, because of the size of a project or the scale of a project, what they do is they provide this level of information so that you, as a council, can see which direction they're wanting to go. Now, you can like this facade, you cannot like it. That's neither here nor there in terms of this presentation. But the level of detail allows you to feel comfortable with the intent of a building, but it also allows a developer with a little bit of flexibility to make sure certain elements are, are included and scale is achieved, if they need to make amendments later on because a potential end-user is different than they initially thought. And this will probably be one of the areas we come back for a little more direction as we have a draft, to see exactly what can be amended administratively, and what you would like to see come back to you. And also, you'll see at the bottom, this detail in there shows you the view for each of those, those facades. So it tells you where on the site this is located. This is from the city of Naples, and this is one of the renderings, the architectural renderings they provided for the hotel on Third Street. Not to know if any of you saw the, the news coverage of that. This is excellent in terms of providing a feel. You can see generally how a building will be designed, how it's supposed to fit into its surroundings. What this does not provide to you are dimensions or exact specifications. It doesn't tell you exactly how deep a balcony is going to be. It does not tell you how long an eve overhang will be, but it does give you a feel for how all of those elements will play out in relation to, to the right-of-way, or at least the public space. This is where you provide a little bit more of that detail, and this is also part of their submittal requirements. This you'll see, well, you probably won't see from where you're sitting, but if you had the packet in front of you, you would see more dimensions included. You would have the height of the buildings, you would have the height of the first floor, you would have the length of the buildings. Certain things that, that have been questioned by this council in the past for applications are included in this particular exhibit. And this is the inside of the building. And you're probably asking, "Why do we care about the inside of the building?" But if you remember correctly, we have had a hearing where the exterior of the building, actually, there's been several of these hearings, where the, the exterior of the building has been directly impacted by what developer wanted to propose for the interior of the building. And for certain uses, or at least for certain projects, you may want to require an interior schematic. So, as you're discussing the impacts to the exterior and the imperials from the right-of-way, you can see and adjust to how the interior space will be affected. This allows you a better picture for why buildings are undulated or designed the way they are, and would allow you to provide better direction to a developer. Probably not for every type of use or for every application, but you may want to specify certain uses, maybe just hotels, maybe, maybe larger medical facilities. But those may be things you want to consider to see how the interior is going to impact the, the exterior. And those are really the examples that, that we had presented to the zoning board. There was a larger discussion, but those slides that I just presented to you were unanimously recommended for your review and discussion. So, I don't know if you have any questions or, or direction, but we're happy to receive it.
Counsel?
I've got a couple.
Fred?
Number one, I think, even though I don't want to see engineering, I do think that they, you, for example, if you were to move forward with the development of one of these golf courses, it means they're, they've got an existing drainage system. So we need to know the outfall elevations of the outfall structure, and is, where's it draining into? Because if, as you well know, one of the problems we have, some of the outfalls, even though you've got a lovely community, is so low that when the good old Imperial River or Spring Creek gets up, you have no drainage. No drainage means it backs up, and that means if you develop a golf course, you're going to have a water problem if somebody goes in and makes them redesign the whole damn system. So that's important. So I think we need that. Another thing we need to agree on is that at least every couple months, they'll come back and tell us what it looks like as they put the meat on the bones, and we get into the drafting of the ordinances or amending ordinances. We see early drafts and see it all the way along, so we can make inputs to it, or comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just go through that real quick. If you'll see under the site plan, there is a general utilities, there's a stormwater retention, shows existing and conceptual design. There's also on, on the second page, under landscaping, the identification of berms and water and sculptural features. So those are the areas I think that Councilman Forbes was addressing, but just so this council knows going in, outfall elevations, specific locations of outfall, those can be altered significantly when someone applies for the Water Management District permit. So while someone can propose a certain design or a certain intention at the zoning level with you, that intention may not be supported by the Water Management District, and you could wind up with an outfall in an entirely different location, or at least a different design and elevation. So, that's just a word of warning before we get too far down the process.
There's a related point, which actually is divorced from this, it's a cousin to it, which is, been talked about before in this council, which is that the Water Management District has certain standards. We face the reality here that we have large swaths of land that were full of water in the context of the hurricane and what happened the week before. Those 500 or 100-year events seem to be occurring at a minimum around here every 15 years, actually threat of more of that sooner. So irrespective of what goes on here, I do think we don't want to be the city that floods, and we do have to think about what standards over and above the Water Management District standard should be in place, so simply we don't have neighborhoods flooding. And that's, that's a big deal. But it's actually, it's not this issue here for this group, but it's relevant what that standard is, and I think we need to focus on it.
Yes, sir.
Counsel? Anything else for John? Thanks, John. Okay. And then we'll, public comment, I guess. I mean, we got a motion and a second, but-
Let me just a comment.
Yeah.
We've done this before. Mike is here, I think Mike should talk, but every member of this community is a stakeholder, and we have a public comment period at the beginning, and the members of the community got up since he's been accommodated, and Mike asked him to come up. I think it's fine. I would appreciate it unless we generally have a public comment built in for each item that the comment be given when the public comments. But having said that-
Sure.
Welcome, Mike.
Okay. I only suggested it because it was a presentation, and you can't really comment on something prior to the presentation, so-
Well, the public comment, enough said.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Thank you. And I agree, I think probably we should list, that public comment should be delineated in the agenda, just to make, make it clear. Just a couple of quick points, because I, you know, I think we're, we're headed down the right path. I do want to thank Larry and the zoning board for allowing me to participate in the public workshop. It was very productive. Obviously, the goal here is transparency and, and confidence by the, by the public about what's going to be built, what it's going to look like, where the trees are going to be, what the building's going to look like from different angles, different neighborhoods, traffic, drainage, and, and trying to meet transparency and certainty without putting too much of a burden on the developer or builder in terms of costs and time and risk. And I think that this approach with conceptual buckets is a smart one. It will result in a little bit of incremental cost, but it's not something that is going to be over burdensome, and I think it will allow the developer to better sell his project, not only to the council, but also to the public and eventual end-users. And I look forward to working with the board as we move forward to drafting the ordinance, but I think we're heading the right direction. And I've talked with the stakeholders that I represent, and they're very confident that, that this will work and continue to work, and that it will still allow Benita to be seen in the eyes of builders and developers to be more business-friendly than our neighbors to the north and the south. And I think that's very important going forward. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel? Anything else? There's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Larry, everybody, thank you very much.
And we will get the updates.
The updates?
Yeah. If, I said we need to hear about as they start putting meat, meat on the bones and start to develop drafts. You don't want to wait till you get down to the end and you just get handed the ordinance to look at.
Are you looking at me, or are you looking at staff, or who are you looking at?
Yeah, you're doing it.
Yeah, I mean, who are you looking at, Fred?
You were questioning me.
Staff will coordinate with the zoning board as, as they come to appropriate milestones.
All right. I'm the guy in the hot seat. That's me, Fred. I'll provide the updates.
You're district lead.
Yeah. No, but I think, well taken, Fred. Very good.
And, and just while there's still zoning members here, I just wanted to mention the, the letter that we received from them. I, I- I don't normally ask what you guys did because I'm always watching the meetings. So I do pay attention to what you guys do, I do put some value in it, and I want to thank you for being there. And another thing I'd like to look at is possibly, can we do something where if you guys approve a project, why does it have to come to us? You know, if you guys don't allow something, or you know, they still have some other issues, you know, then have it come forward. But I mean, I think if something's straightforward, you guys are 100% behind it or unanimously behind it. You know, I don't think it should have to come to us, so I think that's something we should look at, and thank you again. Like I said, I do put a lot of stock in what you guys do, and I just want to let you know, I do watch the meetings. I wish I could attend them all, but I usually hit like one or two in the morning, I'm watching your meetings, so...
I can't tell you how appreciative I am of your comments. Thank you very much.
And I do want to follow up on that because I also watch on video, in fact, I watched it twice because it wasn't clear to me exactly the nuances of what you talked about. And I do think that I did watch the meeting where you had recommended that you present some kind of oral comment on your findings at the council zoning meeting, which I think would be very helpful, because there are certain aspects to your deliberations that might not be, they may seem that they're very strong when you're there, but when you do the video, you don't get it. So I watched it twice to verify what you said, and even on the second time, I didn't quite get the emphasis. And the one instance what you talked about, I still think that we were not given the proper guidance there in regard to what we had the authority to do or not do. So that, I think that was the problem there. But you may disagree with me, but I think if there had been a representative from the zoning board that had discussed the things that you were concerned about, I'm sure everybody would listen. And frankly, I do think, as much as I do watch the video, your meetings are almost as bad as ours. So, you know, not only do we have to sit through our four hours of meetings, and not that you don't do good work, and you can fast forward through them, that I think that it's hard for us to spend two hours or whatever it is, and then if we miss something, we've got to do it again. So I would like an executive summary, so to speak, where you emphasize the very important things that were most on your minds when you made the decision. That would be helpful to me.
So our job is to be your eyes and ears.
Correct.
You make the policy.
Correct.
We had a rare case this time where the issues presented, we felt, were legal issues. They were not fact issues where we had a lot of discretion. Now, we can argue about the, you know, there were three points in the case, it was a simple case. I think if we all looked, would we all have approved Popeyes had there not been the statute? I think you would have had an unanimous vote in favor of it. I don't think anybody was against it, but we work with this all the time, and so we've become accustomed to saying, you know, we don't like this, but the law requires we approve it. This was one of those cases, and I don't think that, I agree with you, I don't think we, and it's my responsibility, did a good enough job at clarifying the issues.
And Larry, I have one more question, because I think one of those things that we had to vote on it should not have been there, because I don't think it was legal for us to vote on it. That's my own personal opinion. It, not illegal, but in the sense that it was not within our authority to make that decision. So that, I think, has to be resolved with the community development and our legal advice there. That's...
Right.
But again, I think it was an unusual case that was complicated, that it was suggested that it wasn't complicated, but I think it was very complicated.
I might say, thank you for your note. I did not participate in that meeting. I would have voted with Ms. Carumba on it. But I think your points were well made, heartfelt, and obviously, we have a lot of quality people who, I'm glad they seem to be taking it on board, it's appreciative, that's a dialogue, and it's part of moving forward.
You have a zoning board that works very hard, they're all engaged, they're quality people with widely divergent views, and we try to come together. We try, and you'll notice here that we didn't quite come together on all the issues. We came very close, but we didn't quite make it. It was a complicated set of facts here. But we have enormous respect for you, and we look forward to working with you. And again, thank you. I very appreciate it.
Thank you. Larry, and Roger, and Bob, and Jim, I don't know if I messed anybody else, but thank you for being here. Dan, thank you for the work you do.
So the chairman of our subcommittee, Richard Donnelly, was unable to be here today. He had a longstanding client commitment, and he does have to earn a living, so I apologize for him not being here, but that's the reason he wasn't here.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Roma numeral eight, mayor and council member items. There's an addendum here to authorize a city manager to reach out to qualified professionals to develop a plan so that our Little League baseball fields will be one of the premier facilities in southwest Florida, one that parents, children, and all residents can be truly proud of. This is from Deputy Merrill Flynn, green sheet 1901021. Peter?
Yeah, it's the addendum, and basically, since Irma, I've been involved with the parents of the Little League, and Billy was here before, and I think he laid it out well. But we know this, there are over 350 kids in the Benita Springs Little League, this is the baseball Little League, obviously. We have other youth sports as well. It's a cliche, but sometimes cliches are totally right. What a better character-building emphasis one could have for youth than participation in youth team sports rather than having, well, I guess the kids are going to go around clicking their phones anyhow, but it's so important, and so many kids have come through. This is one of two green sheets I have on this subject, and after the hurricane, there was significant damage, and I think I shared, I don't know if I shared with counsel, but I worked with the city manager, just my observations, it's up to her as an administrative matter after meeting with the parents, what had happened there. And Arlene jumped on it very quickly, and a lot was done. But the fact of the matter is that these baseball fields are not in the condition that they should be, and frankly, they're well below par with neighboring communities. I'm a friend of Charlie Whitehead, who has been involved in Fort Myers Beach Little League for decades. He's an umpire there, he was a commissioner of the league. And I just drove up there about two Sundays ago, and the pictures that are attached to this green sheet, those fields are just in the proper, great shape. So my suggestion is that Arlene be authorized to reach out to a design firm. I don't think it's going to cost a lot of money, if it is a lot of money, I'm sure she would come back to us, to see how that whole facility can be upgraded, including the condition of the fields. Also, I don't want to get ahead of them, but I've done some outreach where I live, and I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to get some private money to assist with respect to this. There's been a lot of generosity in this town, all over this town, including from where the community I happen to live in, and knock on wood, I'm hopeful that more people will be reaching out. So it would be a good collaboration between the city and private donors, I'm hopeful. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Doitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye. And for council's clarification, you have also authorized through the budget process funds for urban design, so we would be looking at that as the placeholder for these.
Right, right, okay. Fred?
I'd make a suggestion that you might also contact the Little League, and they may have consultants or free consultants that will come in and look at our fields and give you some recommendations, too. And one last request, based on public comment, is there any, do we have any real numbers on what percentage of the Little League players are residents of Benita versus non-residents? Because I'm sure that discussion's going to come up here.
That's actually the next item.
Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. For Little League, they are chartered through the Little League International, they can't set their own boundaries, so Benita Springs is within their boundaries, but so is Astero and North Naples. So they are in a range of, but all of Benita is included in their district. They're created by districts, based on location of the children. Yep, through Little League International.
Okay, thank you. Eight A, request that city council approve a policy under which there will be no charge for the Benita Springs Little League and Benita Springs Youth Soccer Leagues to use city baseball and soccer fields, and this is also Peter O'Flynn, green sheet 1901019. Peter?
So I've been thinking about this for a while, I've talked to Arlene, gathered data with respect to it. It turns out that the fees that we charge for youth soccer and for the Little League baseball add up to about $10,000 a year if we get paid them. There has been times where we're not. I simply don't think we should be charging, you know, when you think of how we spend money in other ways, and we don't spend it profitably, all right, but, you know, we may be talking about a building and renovating a building for $200,000, and windows cost money, this is a drop in the bucket as an investment with respect to our youth. So my personal feeling, it's a no-brainer that we shouldn't be charging them. I believe, in response to a question that's been asked, if you're in a Benita Little League, you know, maybe you live up on Coconut Road, or maybe you live, you know, a little south conceivably in Naples, in Cuyahoga County, big deal, you know. This is a small change in the context of how we otherwise spend money, and I think it's a good investment.
And I agree, as long as it's a Benita-based Little League...
Right.
Like I said, it shouldn't really matter where the kids are, they're going to be somewhat locally. And, you know, it's part of what we pay our taxes for, is take care of the parks, so...
Additionally, that is consistent with Lee County does not charge for youth, organized youth athletics that are utilizing their Lee County facilities.
Right, right, okay.
And absolutely, Mike's point, just belittle, a bit belittle, Benita, so focused, so I make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Doitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
And for clarification, the fee schedule is part of an ordinance, so we'll go through the proper channels to amend that to reflect council's decision.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, absolutely. Thank you, Peter. Eight B, Benita Springs has its share of bent and damaged street signs. Discuss requesting any city employee, members of council, and contract staff employees report location and description of the type of sign and damage to public works, and this is Councilman Forbes, green sheet 1901016. Fred?
Yeah, it's my observations that we have, like I said, our fair share of signs. Most typically, it's the post that sign is on is bent. It could have been bent from the winds of Irma, and they've had a car bump into it. We do have some signs that are actually disfigured, or the signage itself is kind of damaged. And all I'm saying is that, I know when I go out, I see these things, and oh, that doesn't look too good, and I thought, well, it would be very simple every time I saw one. I'm not going to go out and drive the streets looking for it. Note its location if possible, shoot a picture with your camera phone, and once a month, turn the information into the staff, and they will repair it. And we do have a lot of city employees that are out, and if you occasionally see a sign that's bent or disfigured, I don't think it would take a lot to locate the signage, and in fact, if a citizen wants to turn it, that'd be fine. But I think it doesn't give a city a good image when you have signs that are bent and leaning and damaged and all that. So that's it.
Amy?
Thank you for bringing this forward, Fred, but I think it's way too narrowly focused because I think we just had some communications in regard to trash along a certain area, and I think if you look throughout the city, there are areas of neglect, let me put it. And I have had discussions with Arlene that this should be a city function that at some kind of regular basis, our staff goes out and does an assessment of the property, of the state of Benita Springs. We also are supposed to have, I think on our, or eventually will have on our website, a mechanism by residents can say, request for service. You know, this sign is bent, can you fix it? Or the curb is broken, or whatever it is, the fence is down. Sometimes it's city responsibility, and sometimes it's private property responsibility. But those things are very important because it will alert our neighborhood services to address these kinds of issues. We could have a program, you know, keep the beautiful, we have it, the beautiful in Benita, but this could mean making sure these little quality of life kinds of issues, the broken window, so to speak, is addressed. And I think it's a responsibility of the city to give us a report, if it's every six months or whatever staff thinks is appropriate, but we really need to address that. It's a great example of why, you know, we are not really being made aware of these issues, and a lot of them are easy fixes, so let's just do it. And if we know we can do it every quarter, fine, if we can only do it every six months, but I would like to have a report from staff saying, we've looked all over the city, and these are the areas where we think we need some help.
Arlene, would you like to comment on this? I know you and Matt, you said have been talking about, what's your notion?
Well, we, Neighborhood Services works to try to be as proactive as these items as well, and we also, they have a collaborative effort with the sheriff's office and with other entities, and they have quarterly meetings. We're happy to take any suggestions where someone spots a sign as well that needs repair, but I've heard Councilwoman Carumba had a conversation with me about working with, updating, and maybe what we need to do is look at a strategic plan of how we subdivide out the city and take quadrants and come piece by piece for that. I'd also like to integrate this with the work we're doing with DPZ. If we're going to be replacing signs, let's replace them with the branding that we've talked about in a regular process, so understanding what infrastructure we need to repairs to. We had done a analysis of one street at one time of Terry Street.
Terry Street.
And so we need to look at how the time that it took for that, to do that particular street, and identifying those infrastructure needs, and then see how that could be done geographically in a plan.
I mean, we could even have adopt a street programs. I think if we wanted to engage the public, we could say, can we have Benita Bay take care of this part of 41, or whatever you want to do, or Cedar Creek do one thing. We can engage that if we just organize it in a way, because I think people want their city to look as good as it can be.
I actually think this should be, other than public safety, one of the first tasks of staff. My view is, you know, we can put all the public relations about how great we are and spread that out to everybody, and when somebody goes down the streets of Benita and they see garbage, that's what they're looking at, they're not looking at a press release. So, I mean, this is up to city management, in my view. I think, you know, people can make suggestions, but I would encourage city management to have a disciplined thing where it's not our job to tell you how to do it, where they have certain people driving around and spotting things and writing things down, just a disciplined way of going about it. And I know you've got a lot to do, but maybe it's a matter of reordering some priorities. Having said that, I want to thank Arlene and Matt, I did, I do this from time to time, and I was out looking at the hole in the wall, I mean, it's a good thing, that we have on Imperial Parkway to have the bikes get through, and I went around the other side of Rosemary Park, absolutely filled with black mold, up and down, and Arlene told me, I mentioned this to Arlene and Matt, and I believe that's been power washed during the process of being power washed, so thank you for that.
Okay. Fred?
Well, the only thing I would add is, I agree with everything's been said, but there's no reason that we can't make a contribution to us at this, it's like Peter did.
Say something.
And there are all kinds of people that will help if they know that they're being asked to help clean up. asked to help clean up. And there are plenty of streets that are littered up, too, out in East End in particular.
Do we need a vote on this?
No.
I think we received direction.
Yep, okay, great. All right, 8C, discussion regarding regulation of sales and use of fireworks within the city of Benita Springs. Councilman DeWitt, green sheet 1901018. Greg?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past couple of weeks, I've gotten numerous phone calls, and actually, at the last meeting, I was met by a gentleman from Hawthorne, and I actually put him in contact with Sergeant Baglioli. Basically, what I've been getting, and I shared with council, a letter I've gotten also, I'm getting numerous phone calls on fireworks being shot off, especially during New Year's Eve, Fourth of July. Not that they are unpatriotic, but they have a lot of concern with PTSD, pets being, you know, scared, hiding. The whole neighborhood of Hawthorne is in, you know, they don't like it at all. It's happening more often than not. So my suggestion would be, LCSO is overwhelmed, especially during these times. You know, they're getting, you know, 15, 20, 30 calls for that area. I think the first thing to do would be to ban the sale of fireworks in Benita Springs, make it a little tougher to get it. Ultimately, would be nice to ban it in all of Benita unless you're a professional doing it. I mean, we hire a professional company to do our fireworks on an annual basis. And again, they're not talking about banning fireworks that are, you know, the sparklers and such. They're talking about the mortars that are getting shot off up until 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning and disturbing the surrounding neighborhoods. And again, we're not talking just one day a week. From what the phone calls I've been getting, they're starting on the 20th, 30th of December and go until the 6th of January. So we're talking two and three weeks up until 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. And we can get, we can get ahold of LCSO if we want to, to see the number of calls they've gotten. But it's one of those things, I think we ought to look into it, see what the ordinance, see if we can ban those sales in Benita Springs, not make it so readily available to go and get those things. There, I think we had two or three of them in the city of Benita Springs this, over January. Same things happened in the Fourth of July. There are state statutes on how you're supposed to dispose them. It's not being done. It's a safety issue. And it's also a quality-of-life issue for some of these people. I mean, they have dogs that are just, and loved ones that are suffering from PTSD. These things are going off all the time, so just putting it out there, see what the flavor of the council is on this. Open for suggestions.
No, and Greg, I'll just, I did get an email on this, and down at the beach, I guess the fireworks at New Year's, I don't, one person's opinion, it's, I don't know, with the birds.
Yeah.
You know, and nature, so causing a problem.
It's all the above.
Right.
It's everything. You know, ultimately, I know the people that have contacted me want an all-out ban, I'm sorry, all-out ban, like Marco Island, I guess, has an all-out ban, no fireworks whatsoever, especially, I think the ones that they're really concerned about are the, you know, the larger mortar ones and, you know, the professional ones that really you have to go and sign a waiver saying, "You're not going to, you know, detonate these in Florida because they're illegal in Florida." Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Sorry, Lieutenant? So, you know, they're signing these waivers, and then they're going back into their neighborhoods and firing them off for the next two to three hours, the next three to four days to a week. You know, we're not talking about the ones you can get at Rural King or at, you know, Publix. We're talking about the other highly combustible and flammable.
So what does Marco have?
From what I understand, Marco has a total ban on it, that you cannot fire off those type of fireworks, and it's well-publicized. No fireworks are allowed on the island, and they don't have the sale of them on the island either.
Laura, and then Amy, and then Peter.
Well, I'm sorry, I just went, sorry. I just had a...
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, including on Fourth of July and New Year's Day?
That I haven't checked all the way into, but I think, I think a workaround would be if it's done by a professional, licensed, insured, that's who we hire. We hire a pyrotechnics company out there who's licensed and insured and trained to do this type of thing. You know, let's use myself. I know I'm not going up to Phantom Fireworks and buying $2,000 worth of stuff. I don't know what the heck I'm doing. I mean, I could blow my hand off or, you know, fall over and damage somebody, or, let's be honest, I think it was the fire in Phoenix, it was started by, they were doing a baby reveal, and he shot something that exploded, it was supposed to be a, you know, color of smoke, and started a brush fire that did damage of up to, I think it was $20 million in the state of Arizona.
Arizona, yeah.
You have a process to vet the professional fireworks, because there is a requirement that if you want to have fireworks displayed, it's required to be a special event permit, which instigates a review by the fire district to look at proper radiuses from structures and safety issues, fire truck on site. So there's requirements. We've had, we've also had HOAs apply for them for special events or anniversary dates.
Pelican Landing did it last year.
Bussari has done it, Pelican Landing. The Hyatt has applied for permits as well for fireworks that they have from a barge as well.
Yes.
But when you have a permitted fireworks display, you are, there are requires for licenses for that company, the proper insurances, there's inspections by the state, and then there's inspections by the local fire department.
So that's the workaround for, you know, I don't want to take away what we do on the Fourth of July. Again, that's, let's be honest, that's one day, one day a year for a half an hour, 45 minutes. It's not, like I said, the complaints I've been getting is, you know, start on the 23rd and go until the 6th.
Season.
Well, and that's what it is, and let's be perfectly honest, if you go out and buy $2,000 or $1,000 worth of fireworks, you're going to fire all of them off until the last one's done.
Mm-hmm.
Whether you do it that night or not, it's going to get done. Thank you. So.
Well, and we did that with Shangala. We approved that they allow a special permit. But I've also had constituents call me saying, "Not only are pets, but we feel our homes are in danger." So it's a mobile home, and they just sort of said, "I mean, it comes on our cars, it just keeps us up until 3:00 in the morning."
Right.
So I don't know if I'd ban all fireworks, but the ones that you're talking about...
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the one, like I said, the complaints aren't the ones that, you know, the sparklers and, you know, the things you buy at Rural King or at Publix or local places. We're talking about the ones you have to sign for that says you will not detonate them in the state of Florida.
Well, I just have clarification, because I, I mean, I'm very sympathetic to what you're saying, but you're saying that the most objection is from things that are already banned by the state?
Yes.
All right, so these people are not getting them in Florida, and they're not getting them in Benita. They're getting them in...
No, they're getting them in Benita, and they're signing waivers and saying you will not detonate.
How do they sell them if they're ill?
Honor system.
This is the part I don't understand.
It's a loophole.
Agricultural use, you're scaring away birds from your fields.
Excuse me?
It's agricultural use, you're scaring birds away from your fields.
There's a loophole. That's why I'm saying, first thing that, in my opinion, first and foremost, make it difficult to buy them in Benita. You can't go into three locations, let's say we have them in Benita, and we know it was over by Johnny Malloy's, or get the other couple of places. They've got to go out of town to go get them.
Well, Greg, why not just say we can't...
No, right at East, you know, they have a big tent.
Why not just say, I'm just, we're just spitballing this here at this point, but I mean, why not just say you can't use them except on New Year's and Fourth of July? Does that give the police...
Well, but that's it. That, like, I think what Amy's saying, and I think what Derek's getting ready to say, it's already there. They're just doing it anyway.
So why aren't they going to just do it anyway, no matter what?
Well, like I said, the problem is that during those high acuity times, I think the Sheriff's Office is overwhelmed, and again, it goes back to, they've got to witness it being happening. You know, they can't just go there. So that's, I think that's the problem. My first and foremost thing is, let's make it difficult for them to do it. Let's make it difficult for them to buy. You know, if you can buy them on four street corners here in Benita Springs, they're going to go there. Now, if you've got to make the trek to Fort Myers to a Phantom Fireworks or a Galaxy, maybe more of a deterrent. Not saying it will be, but it may be.
Derek, and then Fred?
I was serving as Marco City Attorney leading up to this, so I recall the conversation. And the regulations that they ended up adopting is basically, they made a local amendment to their fire code saying no fireworks at residential properties, and they changed their noise ordinance to prohibit fireworks of any kind except those authorized pursuant to a permit. So that, they didn't address the sales issue. I don't think there was a lot of tent sales going on in Marco. You have a, you have a number of layers of issues practically dealing with this. One is what the police already deal with. Our noise ordinance would be violated by the launching of fireworks, especially the larger ones. Even if you can get, if the police could get there, but they couldn't get there in time to witness it themselves, you get a situation where you may have the neighbor who called unwilling to testify against, you know, basically neighbors ratting out neighbors. There's always a situation with that with code enforcement. So there's, that's an additional level. If we start, there has been cases about preemption in Florida. We are not preempted to regulate fireworks, except when we start to regulate those levels of fireworks, you know, above the sparklers that the state already regulates. Then we might get into an issue where we can't do it. So addressing Councilman DeWitt's question, one of the ways that I have seen this regulated in the past in the sales is to address it with your tent sales ordinance or your temporary uses, because you've got, you also have a lot of issues with those, when it's pumpkin season and tree season, all the, all the different things. You kind of look at those regulations and you tighten up what can be allowed, what cannot be allowed, because they'll, you'll find those vendors will have a mix. They'll have a bunch of the legal fireworks, the ones that we're not talking about regulating, and then they'll have some that aren't. So we need to really look at that level to get granular at that level for those permits to prevent that, those sales happening.
I wonder if we could hear from Lieutenant Baglioli?
And while he's coming up, Fred, you had a comment?
No, I was just going to say, we need to talk to Derek and let him do this research because, see if we can ban those kind of devices from being in Benita for sale, even if you sign the waiver.
Boggs, you want to come on up, buddy? You mind?
As he's walking up, Derek, can we limit, can we regulate, can we say, "You can sell the sparklers, just not the bad stuff"?
I think that's what you're asking for, yeah.
And you can do that, or you can't?
That's going to be the question, I'll have to research into that.
You know, a number of years when this first came up, the legislature put a short-term preemption in. They said, "Local governments can't regulate this for a number of years while they, while they looked at the issue." I believe it was a sunsetting, though. I believe that if the legislature addressed it by a certain date, then it was open season again. So I just got to go back and look at those regulations.
Now, I just wanted, Jim, what your views are, what you see, reflecting on what Greg's talking about.
Yeah, in reference to Marco Island, I have a little bit of knowledge of what's going on over there, and it's in reference to, just like you said, the wildlife. The sanctuary over at Marco Island Sanctuary is, I believe there's one or two or three bald eagles that are over there, and they're very proactive when it comes to that and the wildlife over there. So that's why they banned it from Marco Island. In reference to here, and also in reference to our friend over there in Hawthorne, we're doing a little bit of proactive enforcement. So when it comes around these dates, we're like in the area and we're trying to curb it before it happens. And also the dry season and stuff, we can, we can kind of enforce it in reference to, you know, lighting these items, but it's up to you to come up with some sort of ordinance in reference to that. And I would believe it would be more important for the wildlife than, you know, you have all these ospreys and the eagles in this area that are being frightened by it, so it's something to look at.
And I guess just a question also to the lieutenant. I mean, there is an uptick of calls, especially in the Rosemary and that area?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, is there some, something, so Greg makes a reference in here to our noise ordinance and the decibel level, but, you know, there's a second part of our noise ordinance, which is not related to decibels, which basically says, "Any person or group of persons who are emitting a non-harmonious sound that would unreasonably disturb the health and welfare of a reasonable person with normal sensitivity." That's a violation of the noise ordinance, not just a decibel level. And from reading that email you sent us, I mean, that actually talked about it being fired at cars and such and such.
And I think...
I don't know why they're not in violation of the...
I think they are. I think to the lieutenant's statement, it's hard to catch them. You know, by the time they go off, then someone calls, that's, by the time they get there, especially in those busier times, it may be a half an hour, 45 minutes before they get there. And now it's done and over with, packed away, or they see them coming, throw it in the bag, and go in the house.
And that was going to be my question, Boggs. If you don't actually see the firework, but you see, you get there 10, 15 minutes later, you see the casing, you see the shell or whatever they call those mortars that they shoot them out of, what do you do then?
Was it me?
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, you would go up to the residents and you would actually knock on the door and encounter them, and actually see if we, see if we could speak to them and see if they could knock it off. But usually, when we do get there, they're gone. I mean, there's debris in the road, that's about it.
Really?
Yes.
Just, wow.
Well, is there some ordinance that we could adopt, leaving aside Greg's banning thing of the selling, that would help you? Or do we have in place whatever? It's just a matter of...
I would look into it with Marco Island and see what you can kind of come up with. And I would believe it would be more of the wildlife corner of what needs to be done.
Could we have a report for Marco Island since?
It's simple. Marco Island just bans fireworks in their noise court.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about the effectiveness of that. Do people still shoot them off?
Yeah, I could, I could reach out to Marco Island.
Yeah. Because my question is, we have provisions to control this, is that people are not obeying them, and we can't reinforce, we can't enforce it because of these limitations. The people won't sign the complaints, and you can't catch them while they're doing it.
Well, that's exactly what happens.
Right. So it's not, we already know they're not supposed to be doing that because they're illegal.
Yes.
Is there any way to go after the people who sell them where they get these waivers that they lie on the, I mean, they must have to sign something, and then if they use them for something other than agricultural...
Well, but again, then we're getting into what the state regulates. We can't regulate what the state regulates, so, you know, we can't go in and basically say, you know, "You signed this pursuant to a state-approved permit or issuance." We can't pull those away. We can make complaints, but I think what's going to end up happening is the, whether it's the DVPR, whoever goes back to the firework vendors, is, "Well, we sign, you know, we can't, make them sign a waiver. We don't know what they do six months later, you know, and so..."
It sounds like Derek needs to be, you should be...
Yeah, well, I'll work with Derek on it, see how it is. Again, if we can just even make sure that the tents only sell what's legal in Florida and not even have those ones on premise.
Yeah.
I mean, that may be the start, I mean...
Yeah.
Just to add, the cities... Yeah, because you can't go to the, you can't go to the local...
Some guys aren't coming from Atlanta to Benita.
Well, and that's what I mean, you can't go to, let's put it out there, and not that we're naming, you know, Rural King, Publix, any type of retail seller. You can't go in the back room and say, "Hey, can I get some of those?" They give you the package deal, and that's what it is, and that's all it is. And maybe that's, maybe that's all we allow.
Okay. Greg, thanks for bringing this up.
These tent people, do we give them some kind of a permit to do it?
They get a temporary use permit.
So can we write it into that, that we have the right to inspect them for prohibited materials or something? Is that, can we do that?
I think what we do, we just take a look at the temporary use permits in general, and just make sure that...
And just say that we could enforce, you know, like we can have our people or the sheriff come in and make sure that there are no prohibitive products in there? Would that, could we enforce it that way?
Well, what we probably do is require them to indicate, maybe could possibly have them post a bond, because, you know, one of the things you do is you'd say, "We have Because, you know, one of the things you do is you'd say, we have a bad actor clause. If you come in and we find out that you were selling something you're not supposed to, then they just come in under another LLC the next year. How do we catch them? Well, maybe we have them post a bond and we forfe, they forfeit that bond. That may be one way of addressing it.
Yeah, I think that, that, that's interesting to me. Because I'm just concerned that people, whether we ban it or not, they're going to get it somewhere and then if we can't enforce it.
I think that's still going to happen. Like I said, there's, there's three or four that I know of in, in Lee and Collier County that sell it. So I'm just trying to make it a little bit more difficult where you've got to go out of your way to go get them. It's not just on every three to four corners in Benita, in the city.
I agree with you, but if they're already illegal, I think your idea of saying you can't sell what's illegal doesn't sound like a stretch.
No.
Yeah.
And then the bond that they forfeit, we could put toward the baseball fields.
There you go.
Just also Cape Coral is also heading towards that way of also banning fireworks.
Great. Mr. Rooney, a little drill down time, all right? Thanks, buddy. Anything else on this? No, Greg, thanks for bringing it up.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thanks, Boggs. Item nine, first reading of the following ordinance, and this is item A, an addendum, draft ordinance, an ordinance for the city of Benita Springs approving a petition of Benita Springs Utilities Incorporated modifying its wastewater tariff to approve a special service charge for leisure time subdivision and providing an effective date. This is green sheet 1901020.
Did you just read the whole title? We might be done.
There you go. How about that?
Let me just ask Derek, so this is consensual, both sides want this?
Yes.
So I'm moved.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, counsel. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Hello, Linda?
Hello again, I'm Linda Schwartz and I would like to support the stormwater utility. I would encourage the city council to keep it simple while at the same time recognizing Mike Gibson's concerns about property values and how those might impact it, perhaps a two-tier system based on property values. Also want to speak to the Benita Springs Golf and Country Club conversion. We're all aware of the flooding that happened there, but homeowners also face a risk of damaged foundation and swimming pools as the area is excavated for construction. The city, I believe, needs an ordinance to hold developers liable when building in flood-prone areas and in areas where the site excavation endangers the structures of surrounding homes. The current moratorium should be in place until these issues are addressed and the developer presents a risk mitigation plan. I would also like to thank the mayor and city council and city staff and especially Matt Feeney for the work on Spring Creek. The dredging is almost completed. We have worked closely with the city and with Sobek Marine, the contractor, to help them complete this project, which has turned out to be very difficult and very complex. And I'd especially like to thank my fellow Cedar Creek board member Larry Hess, who's really helped with logistics and, and made this possible to happen. So this project should really help with overall flood mitigation in this area of the city and it also will greatly improve the recreational use of Spring Creek. Lastly, I would like to thank your code enforcement. As vice president of Cedar Creek, I've asked code enforcement to help our neighboring property owners such as Spring Creek East, Highland Woods, and Benita Commons to comply with city landscape and vegetation requirements as we are attempting to do. So Jason Albert has been very helpful in getting them to clear invasives and exotics in the land surrounding us and also on Spring Creek. Finally, I support the ban of fireworks sale in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Hey, Ben?
That's me again, Ben Hersonson. I just want to announce that on a week from today, the 23rd of, what month is this, January? I forget. Too many meetings. January, there will be a kind of a workshop or slash forum at the Benita Station, Fire Station Four. Now, I am, as the fellow who's kind of coordinating the neighborhood with respect to the issues leading into regulations for, for golf course conversions, that the meeting last week, of course, we had on the 8th, it was really jammed and, and we know the city's going to have another one, which is great. This is not sponsored by the city. This is me doing it on behalf of the residents in the area. And we probably will expect 50 to maybe 75 or 100 people. I spoke to John and, and we'll have two planners who will be there from the city, community development, to listen. And that's important. So we want to get our act together, come up with our priorities with respect to feeding in some ideas and suggestions to community development regarding these regulations. So I invite city council members to, to please, if your calendar is clear, I can, I can imagine all the free time you folks have, please feel free, again, again, not to necessarily participate, but to just be there and listen to the issues coming from this area. And the more and more we talk, the more I hear about the issues like a storm water utility, boy, I support that 100%. Where do I sign? I know Peter O'Flynn will be there, our counselor, and I look forward to getting these people to come across with their priorities so it makes it very clear and cut what our issues are in our area. And that, and then I look forward also, following that, to the city-sponsored event. But I want to make it clear, this is not a city event and anybody who's listening, please plan to attend next Wednesday evening, 5:30 PM at the Fire Station Four on Benita Grant. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ben.
I could just make a comment on that, yeah.
I got one after that, before Kathy comes up.
Which, I was invited, it is my district, I'm going to attend, I am going to say some words. So if others plan to come, you got to think about sunshine.
I was going to say, because it's not going to, we don't have time to advertise.
This is not a public meeting.
And it's not, we don't have time to advertise, do we?
Sunshine law strikes again, but-
Oh yeah, we've got plenty of time to advertise.
It's a week.
Well, but it's not, it's not a reasonable notice is all, we're not required to post an advertisement in the newspaper. We can advertise it online, we can post on billboards.
I will not, and I'll be out of town, but-
The same caution, though, does happen. For example, when we do our public workshops, as you know, myself or Matt announces to the public that you would reserve your comments for your regular meeting, because you could possibly be voting, there could be a voting matter that's discussed there.
Right, so I'm going to be obviously mindful of all of that and I've talked to Ben about that and he understands that.
So if I went, I just don't say hello?
You can say hello. Be cordial.
I thought you just couldn't talk.
Although, just keep saying hello, that's all. That works.
You can listen.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, but you just can't speak.
Speaker, that indicating what might be-
So we shouldn't listen to Peter, but-
No, they can't. Well, Derek, that's-
It only can be one-way communication.
Yes.
And just to be clear, that's the 23rd, Ben? I'm sorry, I won't be able to be there, but I'm fully supportive of what you're doing, so thank you very much.
Do we, are there any other council members who are-
I can't make, oh yeah, that can make it?
I cannot.
But I would-
Work the problem the other way.
But I would like you to clarify, my understanding was, is that we could go and you didn't even have to notice it, as long as we just kept our mouth shut. Is that true?
The entire issue is-
I wish Mike or Fred said that, Amy, because then I would say, is that even possible?
What I'll do is, let me, let me, I'll send some, some, something around for you all to look at, some emails, get the guidance on it, but the idea is to just avoid communications.
Yeah. Just go and listen.
Beginning of a dialogue.
All right, so if O'Flynn spoke and we didn't say anything in regard to whatever he said, we'd be fine, right?
Correct.
And you're going to tell us whether that is correct or not?
Yes, but you know, there's always this temptation. The, the facts of these cases are always something to go, something like this. One member speaking, another member sitting in the audience just listening, talking to the person next to him, the person next to him walks over, tells, asks the question. There's so many factual circumstances that come up.
Let me, let me just say that we'd have to just deal with that at the beginning. So for example, Mike and I went a few years ago to something at, what's, where the sheriff was? Imperial Harbor. Imperial Harbor. And we abided by that, so it worked out well.
Only one of us actually spoke, the other just sat back and listened, didn't make any comments.
It's almost, it's effectively the same rules.
But people are told that, so they don't think what's-
When they get the emails, when their email's sent, you know, it's a one-way, as long as it's a one-way communication, it's great. But once it's, it's that dialogue. And the other thing to avoid is actually saying, I'm going to vote for X. Those are the other things we try to avoid, too.
I wasn't, I wasn't supposed to say that?
No, try to avoid it, especially on cause of just like-
I agree with him, I'm going to vote that way.
I was lying, it didn't matter.
Just one last point on that. Irrespective of the sunshine law, I'm mindful of the fact that we have the moratorium in place. We have to, you know, respect private property rights, so even if no one else is there, obviously counsel, just like staff, needs to properly make their statements consistent with that. We have a private property owner, we have individuals who are going to speak up and it's got to be understood in that context and private property rights respected.
Okay, great, thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
May I?
You may.
Hello, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath. First of all, I also support the ban of the sale of fireworks in the city. I go along with that. And number two, on a positive note, the Little League, don't charge them, let's face it. Anytime we can get the kids out there exercising and getting rid of all that energy and enjoying sports, we should really support that. And I'm very happy to hear that the progress is made on the Spring Creek dredging thing. I know that was so important, anything to do with our waterways and it. And the only other thing I want to bring up is an issue that's been discussed frequently, very frequently in the last few days, and that is the banning of smoking on the beaches and whether it'll ever come in front of you or not, I don't know. Because I know there's a legislator, I'm sorry, I didn't get his name, I think he's from the Sarasota area, he is going to try to get it as a statewide ban. It has failed before.
Senator Joe Gruders.
Is he from Sarasota, right?
Yes, yes, very good.
Thank you, thank you very much, yeah. And I believe the state of Oregon is proposing the ban and of course Fort Myers Beach, and now I see where the mayor of the city there is. I don't know how many of you all were around in the late 80s and early 90s when Marjorie and Dave Ward formed the CAB, the Citizens Association at Benita Beach. They formed it because they wanted to keep fees off letting the people use the beach. And they promised to do the cleanup, which they did, because I know I participated. And one of the big bugaboos with Marjorie was cigarette butts. I don't know why everyone thinks it's a big ashtray out there. I've never been able to figure that out. They also toss things out the window. But she even had contests where the kids would go there specifically to pick up cigarette butts, count them, and then write essays. So that's something that's important. It may come up, it may not. But I also just want to bring up something I heard, which kind of pleases me. You know, the people that bought Fitzgerald's and have the Benita Beach Balloon Restaurant, you know, I did see they had a fire there, they're okay. I saw the cars all there last night. But I have a very good friend that works there and I was very pleased to find out that they do not allow smoking, even on their patio, and they do not allow vaping, which I think is positive, too. So I commend them for that. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public that would like to speak? That's all right, these, got plenty of time, there we go.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Whittmore for the record. I have a list of a few things I want to talk about. First of all, when you talk about the golf course, we have to be really aware of the butters, because we are blocked in because of gates across Stillwell. So you have to, when you look at developing, you have to really consider, like Naples did, at least a 200-feet buffer zone around, the escape routes for people who live, which are blocked in, which we are down behind, because now that we have the school and all that. Another one I'd like to give kudos to our code enforcement. Those guys have been wonderful, because you know, I'm working on the McSwain House with the Historical Society. And finally, this last week, they forced the owner to come and clean up the mess, because there was a possibility of a sale. But I had filed two complaints and finally, they got the owner to have Dave Johnson come in and that whole lot now looks presentable. Because as you come around the Rotary at Pennsylvania, the guys hit the signs, they hit the trees, there's always a mess, but that is a great eyesore. Without code enforcement really following up over the last year, that would not have happened. And the other thing I was thinking about, when you talk about the collecting monies for water storm drainings, that's absolutely something we need to do, but I live in a community that throws a little quirk in that. We have individual houses that our deeds all say condos. So when you get down into the belly of trying to figure out who does what, and I'm sure there are other places in Benita the same way, because we have a footprint, we're individual houses, but our deeds say condos. So that's just a little quirk. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Yes.
Councilman Grant, good morning.
Good morning. I didn't know there was a council member, a council meeting today, but anyway, I just wanted to say, I was at the state legislative, well, I was late at the state legislative delegation yesterday, so I missed the entire thing, but I did send the information on cost of rail in, to redo the rail, if you wanted to, between San Carlos Park, Alaco Road, and Railhead Industrial Park. And there was an article in Trains Magazine and he's got the copy of that. And if you need any information of what the costs are, I gave that to you. And I sent it to the chairman of the Lee County Legislative Delegation and with a request to forward another copy to the Florida Department of Transportation. The cost is not very much. It's a lot cheaper than road construction.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please.
Just one final brief word, Linda Schwartz. I just want to say that I support what Alex is doing. Anything this council and the mayor and the city can do to support rail transportation, I strongly endorse. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, Linda. Anybody else from the public that'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the city attorney's items. Mr. Rooney?
Other than the BSU item, I have nothing.
Okay, wonderful. City manager's items, Arlene?
Good afternoon, mayor, council. We have an addendum item and the mayor and I and the assistant city manager attended the 2019 legislative, Lee County Legislative Delegation meeting yesterday. We had, the mayor had the opportunity to present our approved-
Fred was there, but he was representing a stero yesterday, right?
Sorry, councilmember Forbes was there as well. As, as you know, in our shortlist, we discussed our major flooding project of Imperial Dean Street at the $750,000 ask. And we have put together our legislative request items through our consultants, Carol Green and Ashley. And we have to come up with a 30% match based on current projects that we're doing as well as projects that we've most recently done that directly related to flooding. So at the legislative meeting, we did ask the mayor to talk for a moment with representatives as, as possible to find out if that 30% was appropriate. So we've heard that we are in a good situation at 30%. I think we've heard they prefer 50%. But we wanted to make sure that we were all crystal clear at where we were and if council's comfortable with what we've determined. After the meeting, Matt and I spoke a little bit, we might be able to allocate a portion of the stormwater uti, utility fee study that's based on the formulation of studying current conditions. But we'd have to disguise what kind of allocation out of that whole study and the cost of the study we would feel comfortable with justifying to add to that percentage a little bit. Any other methodology to get the percentage up to 50 would, would require us to look at current funded budgets and, and that, that would be a decision of council. So we wanted to make sure council was fully aware, aware of where we are. Carol Green is fully aware of where we are. She's, she's indicated this 30% match to, to both Representative Rodriguez as well as Kathleen Pasadena, Senator Pasadena in the Senate. So we look if there's any clarification or, or change from council you'd like to see on that.
Okay, council?
Just to say, I asked Arlene yesterday to, if she can get the four or five local areas, Sanibel, Marco, North Fort Myers, and one or two others perhaps, that received water project funding from the legislature last year, what the amount was and how much their match was, just so we have that data.
Sure, that's great. Amy?
I just, Arlene, I'm a little confused. You're saying, you're, there's not, from your meeting, there was not a definitive answer that we needed to go to 50%, but that they were sort of looking, what was it, like a casual discussion or what? or what?
Yes, this was a casual discussion, and from what we understand from the Senate, there is no obligation of a match. We've heard that directly from Senator Pasadena in a meeting that the mayor had as well. We have had a formal meeting with Representative Rodriguez, where this was the same indication that he looks for a match, and he casually mentioned that the 50% is what they like to see. It is not a hard stone number. And I think that the mayor tried very hard to alliterate that to the representatives we talked to, that we were looking for an indication of where we needed to be. In speaking with Representative Eagle, he said he would defer to Representative Rodriguez, but he thought that 30% was a strong match. He did mention that when he goes before his committee boards, he likes better to say he's at 50%, but felt comfortable with the 30%. But he was going to defer that to Representative Rodriguez. And I let the mayor kind of comment a little bit more on the conversation.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, you know, because obviously the delegation was up front in the meeting and listening, but when we were in the hallway, actually getting ready to leave after a couple hours, and Representative Eagle was out in the hallway, he took a short break, and we had the discussion with him, and the best way I can say it, 30's good, 50's better. However, there's no guarantees. I mean, I don't know how else to say it. 30's good, 50's better, it's like quicksand, there's no guarantees, we're at the, it's the will and pleasure and priority of the House and the Senate and the governor. But there's not a number that, oh, good, 50%, you know, you don't stamp it, approved. I wish it was that. It's frustrating, but it's.
And the follow-up is, if I understood what you were saying, is that we may be able to come up with a little bit more money?
Correct.
And how little was that? I mean, could we bring it up to 40% without trying to really mess up the entire budget? I'm not clear on that.
Thirty-five. I'll let Matt indicate. I think we were going to look at the scope of the current contract we have for the stormwater utility, and see if we could allocate a, because a portion of that is the study of our storm, of our stormwater systems and infrastructure, which, whether the council approves a stormwater utility or not, is helpful to staff in accomplishing our goals, so.
Just, I mean, simply, 40 is about what we thought. If you looked at the study, it's about a $320,000 study that's currently underway, and if you take about a 25% of that dollar amount, and I've rounded numbers here, but if you took 25% of that and added it to our current match, you'd get around a 40% match. And the logic would be, you heard Stan Tech today talking about how stormwater utilities can provide funding for grant match. So, they're looking at that, you know, as providing you revenue generation for grant match, which is what this ask is of the legislature. So, that would be kind of the logic that we would, we would be leveraging, and that, and so it seemed like, you know, if you desired to increase that number, you know, it would be allocated about 25%, and you could get to 40 on your match with the legislature.
And that, that's where we're at, comfortable with the current projects and the most previous projects you've done, that we can justify within an application.
And just one more question, have we applied for any other grants outside of this, the state legislature for this purpose?
Well, we're continuing to apply for the FEMA grant programs that we have for stormwater.
Would that include the special areas? Because this one is for like Dean Street and all that other stuff, and Quinn. So, do we have also trying to do it in another way, or is this our only chance at it?
No, we've applied for this same project, or similar project, the same area with the federal government through their HMGP process, as well as through the LMS process, which is a different type of HMGP grant. So, it has been applied for, through those areas as well.
And those matches were less than 50%, right?
I believe the HMGP was 25%.
Twenty-five. But, but whether we receive the legislative delegation funding or, and/or the grant money, we can utilize both.
Oh, you can utilize both.
We definitely believe we can utilize both.
Greg?
Just a quick question, and I think Councilman Forbes has brought this up before. Can't we on paper say we're going to pledge 50%? Because let's be honest, well, let's, hear me out here, I know everybody's snickering and all that. I mean, we can pull it out of different, we can, we can pull it out of some different funds. Point being is, we can show on paper that we're going to have that. We know this year legislation's going to go until March, government's not going to sign anything until July, we're in the middle of our budget season at that point, we can reallocate it at that time, and put it back to where, where we think it needs to go back in there or budget for it. I mean, if we can make it look like, or actually pledge it for different projects, I mean, and I know it's near and dear to everyone's heart, but we can pull it out of quadrant study and put it in there like this. Because right now, let's be honest, since Irma has hit, water is our major thing. I know traffic yesterday was a bear, and I know it's a bear every day, especially during season. But, right now, one of our asks, major asks is water, is for drainage. So, let's make it to its 50 if it's more palatable to the legislation. We won't know until, let's be honest, until the end of March, before we even know if we get it or not. And by the time the PDNEs are done, and all, and all that, we're into another budget cycle.
I would say this, Greg, I would think it would be good to sit down individually with staff and work through these numbers and what the tolerances are. We have close to $11 million of state funding with respect to the quadrant plan that was based on representations about our contributions, so it's not that simple. Having said that, I think you raise a fair question, but I think, it sounds like from what they've been talking about here, this 35, 40, they've been calibrating with respect to that.
And plus, we've also got the FEMA money, knock on wood, one of these days will come back to us.
One of these years, yeah.
Any updates with FEMA reimbursement? I know, kind of up.
Well, we, we get, we've had some of those smaller contracts that have been coming through. I understand that the, one of our larger debris removal items keeps moving closer and closer to the list, where we're getting closer to allocation in that, but we don't have any guarantees.
So, we've had the one check for 21,000 or 22,000, and then have done others come in?
Yes, you've signed two other contracts, but I don't know if the funding has been received by the wire transfer.
Yeah, they were small.
There's a couple of big debris projects that are on the, per their accounting, are on the precipice, but they haven't crossed that threshold with, like the other projects yet.
I would be in favor of upping it to the 40% that would still give us some flexibility. If that's not enough, then, you know, the state legislature has to do their responsibility, and it's, you know, they can't expect us to, with all the needs that we have here for stormwater, I'd be willing to go that far, but I worry about doing too much reallocation, and I want to be honest about it, you know, in the sense of not obfuscating what we're doing here.
I know, I'm just saying.
I know, but it bothers me that we don't have, we don't have a mechanism by which we can deliver the matching funds. I mean, we have, some of our matching fund is allocated in the CIP, we see that, and I want a clear path to doing that.
I think what Greg is saying is, it doesn't cost you anything if you don't get the money. And if you get the money, you know.
Nice problem to have.
Nice problem to have, which is correct.
And I'm going to jump on a quick soapbox here, just for 30 seconds, maybe, maybe longer than 30 seconds. You know, all these things that we're talking about here, stormwater, that came, yeah, hit the button, I'll watch. It is, when, they came apparent to us after a natural disaster. And what is disturbing to me is that they're a need for us right now. The state legislatures and our representatives should see that need right now, and not hold us hostage for 40, 30, 50% of our money, when it was a need that we needed. And, and what I mean by that is, this isn't like, let's use a quadrant study as an example, or even Pine Lake, we've been asking for Pine Lake Preserve for five years, six years into it, ever since I've been on council, we've been asking for it. Same thing with our first, our first go-around was the quadrant study. See, these are things that we want to do, that we, that we'd like to do. Stormwater management and what we have here and the, and the issues we have is a need to do. It's not a nice to have, it's a have to have. And, and I said this when it happened at Irma, and it's probably going to say incorrectly, and Tad will probably quote it this way, to be held hostage, to come up with 30 to 40 to 50% of our taxpayers' monies, to do something that, that we need to have done, is bad, I think. I don't like it, it's, I hate to even say it, because I am one, it's a politic, it's politics. We need this right now. We needed it a year ago, and it fell on deaf ears, because we, when we were all going up there, it wasn't, you need a match, it was, what do you need from our representatives? We told them, then in the 11th hour, well, you guys don't have any money to, well, how would we? We didn't know we needed it until September, when, when the hurricane happened. Now that we're trying to identify, now we're trying to, you know, scrape together 30, 40, 50% of the money, when it's, we need it. It's not a nice to have, it's a have to have, and we're going to our legislature, to our state, and asking for this. And, and to put it bluntly, we're being held hostage to come up with 30 to 40% of something that we need, not that we want, it's something that we need and have to have. Because as Councilman Flynn and Deputy Mayor Flynn says, these hundred-year floods are happening decades, not in hundred years, not in centuries, we're talking decades. So, I'm done with my soapbox.
No, that's.
You know.
Talk to the legislature.
Well, and we have, I've been up there, and if we've got to redistribute some funds from this to show that we got 50%, then that's what we'll do. But I think it's atrocious that we have to do that on a, on a have to have, not a nice to have.
Well, I think that's part of the conversation, hopefully, we're having with, said maybe slightly differently, but, but basic, the substance of it, with our local representatives. I mean, I think we've heard today that on the Senate side, there is no match, so it sounds like a conversation on the House side.
Fred, do you have something?
Well, I agree with what Greg is saying, and we did know in December of last year that we were supposed to have 50%, but it fell on deaf ears. However, there's one other thing we got to realize. There was one horrific hurricane up at Panhandle, and there was another hurricane, and so you've got our needs of 2017 now competing for the needs of those hurricanes that just tore, you were up there, Greg, you know how.
And I, and I agree, and here's.
Yeah, we're, it's, I'm in agreement with everything you're saying, I'm just saying, the real world is, we're now competing with the natural disasters of 2018 with 2017 ask, so.
And I agree with you, and let's go with Bay County, what you're talking about, Hurricane Michael. I was up there, and I can, I would hope that the state legislature wouldn't expect Bay County or the surrounding counties to have to come up with 30 to 40 to 50% of an ask of what they need up there right now.
I would agree with you.
They did it to us. And, but I hope, and knowing the way we feel about, and what I've just ranted on, I'm hoping they don't do the same thing for Bay County, Escanee County, and the counties around that area. But, as history has showed, they probably will. Yep, very good.
They have supposedly made that a priority for the state, so.
And I, they did the same thing in 2017 when Irma hit, and there were three large counties that got hit.
And then they got sidetracked by the.
Right, yes.
Problems in the school.
So, at staff level, we can go back, and I think we can look at the allocation that we talked about, getting us to 40%. Would you also like us to come back with recommendations on how to get to the 50%? Are you comfortable?
I'll tell you, my suggestion would be to talk to our state representative, who's ever carrying the ball for us, and say, and we respect him, or her, whoever it is, and say, it sounds like you've already kind of done this, all right, so, pardon me, all right. We know you're carrying this for us, we're assuming that, what do we, what do you need for ammunition for us, from us, to get this done? Before we, because we're kind of playing with, not playing, but I mean, it's what you said, Peter. I mean, to me, the key is our state representative, and our state senator. And, and they got it, they got it done, not they individually, but representatives in this area got it done last year for three or four or five other jurisdictions surrounding us, when we would, when, and, you know, and, you know, the word was out there, well, it was Parkland that caused us not to get the money. That was silliness. Parkland occurred with respect to them too, when they got the money. So, ball's in our court, and I think it's, whatever kind of gussied-up version of what Greg said, needs to be the conversation, whomever's doing it, whether it's Greg or Peter, whomever, with our state representative.
Yeah, but I mean, to answer your question, Arlene, yeah, right, but to answer your question, I would like to see, we're at 30, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see 40, and I'd like to see 50. But, we will continue to have the conversations, and it's, it goes back to, 30's good, 40's better, 50's even better, but there are no guarantees. And that's the frustrating part. Very frustrating.
You can do 100% too, if they don't have a decision.
Right, 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 can we do it if we pay for it ourselves?
What troubles, what troubles.
Are we allowed to do that?
What troubles me about this, this particular ask, that it is directed towards the communities that were most significantly hit by the storm. And you can certainly make the logical case that they need to be addressed as soon as possible. So, I think the city is doing their responsibility, and I think the message that this is a particular ask that is, probably has a higher weight than some of the other things that they might be looking at. And I agree, we have to do more political action. I'm curious about the percentage, I think that the percentage couldn't have been 50%. I thought we checked it for the ones that were given last year.
Oh, we did? Okay, what was it?
I don't, I don't remember, I think it was like 30% or so, because I think it was like, ours was 25.
Well, it wasn't limited to Lee County, there were water projects all over the state. I think we need that data, or.
But I'm curious about that. So, why is it that now we're going to 50% in a situation that's, I agree with you, just incredibly critical to real people, that we're really damaged? And those people were damaged as much as, what is that, Mexico Beach? Mexico Beach, I mean, it's the same situation there.
Council, anything else, or, Arlene?
Well, additionally, your sort of lower-level priority was to look at the conversion of septic tanks, and was, staff was to come back if we were hearing that this was going to become a priority of this legis, of this legislative session. And we're hearing from capital strategies that this is becoming a priority, it's also becoming a priority of Governor DeSantis as well. There's a possibility that there'll be a DEP grant program provided, as well as the Senate most recently heard testimony regarding environmental research and how septic tanks affect waterways. So, at this point, we wanted to get some direction from the council. Do you, would you like us to start to pursue some more conversation with BSU, as they would have to be our partner in this? And would you want us to pursue that particular item a little bit further?
I would, I don't know what.
I would.
Can you look and see what Naples is proposing down there?
Yeah.
And also what Cape Coral has done?
Well, Naples is saying, take them all out.
Yeah.
I'd be interested.
I mean, I think it's great to partner with BSU.
I'd be interested in assessing what the, because we have a vast difference in the septic usage across the city. We have some that were just put in within the last three years, so that's a new septic system. We have some that are really aging, and it seems to me like we should, that the city should have an awareness of really what, what the problems are and how it might be impacting our water quality.
That's my feeling.
I mean, I'm interested in this, I'm sorry, I'm interested in like inspection system at least. I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm done.
No, it's just that, before we partner with BSU, let's figure out what we want.
Well, that's why I'm saying, find out what the problems are and how we want to address them.
Yeah.
I think the other thing is, is see what the DEP grants are for, is it for, you know, upkeep, and how far out? I mean, is it for whole new neighborhoods, or is it per septic, whatever it is.
I mean, should BSU be submitting for them? I don't know. I, that's why I'm interested in what other people are doing.
I think we'll have a little bit longer of a wait on understanding what, where DEP will go with the grant program. I think we also want, we would have to, if we wanted to pursue it as a legislative initiative and provide the applications through the state and the Senate, that might be a more timely process, but we'll find a little bit more from Carol Green on what she suggests as well.
I'll tell you, just, my frustration with the whole legislative stuff is that, and maybe falls on us, is that, not, so Governor DeSantis has said this is a priority of his, but there have been septic tank removal monies going on for years. And both this and the whole conversation about 30, 50, whatever, we're not getting, we need more information about around the state, those who are getting it, how they have been successful. It's kind of like, you know, we're kind of chatting about this here, but how, all these other jurisdictions that are getting money and have got money for septic, for water projects, how do they get it?
Shouldn't we be asking Carol Green that question?
Well, whomever we're asking, whomever we're asking, I just.
I think that's a very good point.
How, how, whomever we have to ask, with Carol Green, whatever, you know, we know all our legislators here are friends, we understand all of that, that's great. The question is, how are these other jurisdictions throughout the state getting, ten, over the years, tens of millions of dollars for projects, not just in Lee County?
Arlene or Matt, do you have anything else? No, great, thank you very much, great report. Okay, mayor and council reports, Amy?
My reports, I did attend the Horizon Council meeting last week, and they focused on, they had a report from the Housing Coalition on housing, and it, which replicated pretty much what we've already heard, there wasn't any new things in that report. And I do have a copy, and I will provide it to Arlene in case anybody wants to look at it. They also, it was sort of like a planning session for what they're going to do for 2019, and they're doing.
two thousand nineteen, and they're do- and they are, they'd ha- well, one thing that was really interesting, well, first of all, let me finish this part of it, um, the other thing they're focusing on is business retention and workforce, workforce training, but they spent a lot of time interacting with, um, Lee County Commissioner Cecil Prendergast, because they're trying to work out the relationship between the Horizon Council, which is the Economic Development, um, Subcommittee that advises Lee County, and how they have to work together, you know? Which was kind of interesting to me, because in, in a microcosm, that's sort of the discussion that I think we've been having, is, we are trying, they were trying to work on a new relationship, and that were, they were cooperative and collegial, and it was sort of the same things that we were doing. And just how that dialogue went on in the meeting was just fascinating. So, it's not only our concern that we may not be having a, an appropriate dialogue, it's even a Subcommittee of the Lee County Commissioner that's doing that, so that, that part was really fascinating to me. Um, I also had a meeting with Citrus Park, uh, where they're, they had, uh, all the returning people come in, it was their, um, manufactured housing entity, and what was, again, fascinating, there must have been two hundred people there, and I was the featured speaker, and guess what the topic was? Stormwater management. I would never think, I said, oh, I'll talk for ten minutes, and they're all gonna, their eyes will all roll back, and they won't pay attention, but they were intimately interested in the topic. And this is a community that you wouldn't really think they would be interested, because they, you know, this is a totally contained thing, but they were, so this is a hot topic, even in a community where you don't think it's interesting, and they are interested in the, in the utility, because they're very concerned about flooding. Um, and that's it. Um, and I do wanna make, just a, an inquiry, because this happened, this has happened a couple of times in deliberations with the council, and it's just, so I wanna understand, first of all, Robert's Rules of Order, when we have like a presentation, like it happened today, and then we immediately said, I moved the question, and somebody seconded it, what's the proper sequence there? Is it, should we wait for the presentation first before somebody, is it just a matter of politeness, or is there a, a, a procedure that is best to follow? And this happened at, 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 um, Popeye thing, where we didn't even ask for the staff, uh, it was precipitous, I thought. So, what, what are we supposed to be doing?
There, there's nothing specific to Robert's Rules of Order with regards to presentation, you know, the ordering of motions is a totally separate issue. I think if this is a concern, I think we're gonna solve the, we saw the vice mayor step up, step up and raise the issue with the council with regard to taking speakers out of order, and things like that, if you would like to adopt some rules for yourselves, let's say, you know, particularly maybe on quasi-judicial items, that you want to have, the presentations completed before a motion can even be entertained, and that would be something that's appropriate. Otherwise, really, you would direct your, your concerns about this to, to the mayor as the parliamentarian at the meeting.
'Cause like, we, we didn't have the written material that was presented by John today, and, before the motion, I thought, you know, we should, if we're, we don't necessarily have to have it orally presented, but we should at least have something written, I think, but it might just be a practical point of view.
Well, I will tell you, with respect to that motion, I had a little brain freeze, I didn't realize John was gonna have a presentation, simple as that.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to be critical.
Maybe not being critical, I'm just telling you what happened.
This is, this is not, though, this has happened a couple of times, where it sort of disturbs me, 'cause I'm rigid, you know.
Well, I would agree with what Derek said, I think on, from, from my two cents, on quasi-judicial matters, obviously, we should hear the whole thing on the record, that's what due process is all about. Otherwise, I think it's, and Peter does a fine job, and it's kinda like, what makes sense, there are many things where immediately we go, fine, that's good, you know, it's just, you know, and it works.
Correct, yeah.
And other things, we wanna hear more talking.
Particularly as you get closer to lunchtime, I noticed.
Yeah, which is about now.
Well, if it's written, you could understand it, because you, you know, we're expected to at least review it, you know, but when it's not even, we don't have the, the written thing, then I think it's, it's a, it's an issue, at least for me, so.
Thanks, Amy. Greg?
I have nothing, sir, thank you.
Okay, Laura?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Okay, Peter?
Two quick things, one is, um, I don't wanna take time up here, please consult with Arlene about CSX and LGO, all of that, what's happening there, she's up to date on it. Um, also, I'm interested to convey something, um, which I forgot to at the last meeting, about a meeting or two ago at the MPO, of the Executive Committee of the MPO, um, there was a conversation about I-75 widening, and, um, it's interesting, the, the premise of the conversation was that I-75 should be widened to ten lanes, it wasn't the question, it was the premise. Uh, so, and it's out in the future, you know, thirty years, and one person at the meeting made a comment, it's interesting, uh, well, there's so much more that's being developed on Corkscrew Road, we gotta do it faster. All right. So, um, just want counsel to know that, it's nothing really, there's, there's, there's an, there's a PDNE study going on, it's programmed out into the future, um, we all wanna keep traffic flowing, but for those of us who don't wanna turn the west coast into what looks like the east coast, uh, it's food for thought. The other thing that is interesting about it is, it was mentioned that the cost per mile is one hundred million dollars, which they would try to get it down to seventy million dollars, so, for twenty miles, it's two billion dollars, so, it, and, now, once again, to put this in context, particularly if it's gonna be communicated here, that, that, this is thirty years away, they're talking, it's not happening tomorrow, but what struck me is that, when we talk about the bike stuff, and safety, it's like, oh, you know, we're worried about, and properly, you know, the last hundred thousand, the last hundred thousand, the money that is flowing into this state for transportation, that's been put on what they call the CIS, which is the Strategic Intermodal System, which happens here to be I-75, is mind-boggling. And I think it pays us all, when we're making our decisions and our asks, and what we're pursuing, to keep that in context. We're kind of like in the real world, this is otherworldly, these numbers, so, that's it.
Great, thanks, Peter. Fred?
Minor little thing, but I think we need to look into it, and it's in Greg's area, and he probably heard it, but there's some kind of a big, uh, dust-up going on between a couple fire districts and municipalities and the county, something about that the fire district wants all hurricane shutters down within thirty days, because if they don't get them down, it's gonna be a life safety issue, and all that, so, I would hope, and supposedly, there's a law that is countywide, that hurricane shutters are supposed to be down within thirty days, which is contrary to what a lot of the laws and homeowner associations have, so, and it was all about life safety supposedly, so, I thought it was kinda interesting, but, and I agree with what Councilman O'Flynn talked about, I-75, one of the reasons it's so outrageously high, is they're gonna have to acquire.
Hunter's Ridge.
Hunter's Ridge, yeah, it'll, it'll put Hunter's Ridge out of business, our, our number one and number nine holes are right beside the interstate, so they would have to pay an arm and a leg to get, get that.
That's why it's two billion dollars a mile or something.
Yeah, right, right, right. Thanks, Fred, I just wanna take a minute here, um, this is from the Arbor Day Foundation, which we continue to do well. Uh, on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I write to congratulate Benita Springs on earning recognition as a two thousand eighteen Tree City USA. Residents of Benita Springs should be proud to live in a community that makes the planting and care of trees a priority. Benita Springs of, is one of more than thirty-five-hundred Tree City USAs with a combined population of a hundred and fifty million. The Tree City USA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with the U.S. Forest Service and National Association of State Foresters. There, there's more here, but I just wanted to read, to give you a flavor here, of Janet Martin and the Tree Committee, and so many others that, uh, are dedicated and, uh, to continuing this, and letting us get this recognition. I, I do wanna give this to Arlene or Laura, there's a sample press release here, that they would like us to send out, I don't see any issues with that, right? Um, but, I, you know, Peter, you had said something earlier, and it's where you, where you walk the fine line, but I, but I'm in total agreement with you. Um, I think for, for a number of years, the city of Benita Springs has been, what, what city doesn't want positive press, right? But, we all want positive press, but when you, um, not, not, I don't want that to be a detriment to anything else we're, we're trying to do, right? So, whereas, we love positive press, we like to get in magazines, we like to see everything that's going on, but your point, and I forget exactly how you made it, made it, is very well-taken. I think it's a very well-taken point, um, let the, let the positive press go on, but quite frankly, if we get a negative piece, because we're doing something about fireworks, or we're doing something about cigarette butts at the beach, by the way, I'd like to have, right, that green sheeted for next week, for cigarette butts on Benita Springs Beach, please, while I'm thinking about it.
No smoke?
No, s- there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff that's not positive, right? You can't say, oh my gosh, look at this, and this is glamorous, but Peter, your point is very well-taken, um, if we're gonna do things a little differently here, so what? I say, so, let's, let's do it a little differently, right? And if it doesn't fit into a nice press release, let's not worry about that. Laura and everybody, you're doing an amazing job, that's not a million miles where this is coming from, and I know it wasn't from you either. It absolutely was, so let's continue to roll up our sleeves and do the hard work that we're doing, so, uh, even if we have to get a little negative, what's going on with Benita Springs? Why are they doing it this way? I'll take that, because I think our citizens know, we're, we're up here doing what we can do, and then some, on, on their behalf, so, thanks for making that point, Peter, I did wanna just spend a minute, it was interest- interesting, it was an honor, literally, less than forty-eight hours after he was sworn in as governor, that Governor DeSantis was here in Benita Springs, at Florida Gulf Coast University Vestor Marine Center on Benita Beach Road, outlining his bold, very bold initiatives, uh, for our environment. I've called him, and of course, he, um, during the campaign, I Googled it after, but, but a Teddy Roosevelt Republican, I mean, he's not coming in here to tweak and finesse a few things, he's coming in here with a big, uh, sledgehammer, if you will, in terms of the environment, you see what's going on at South Florida Water Management, um, reorganization would not be strong enough a word, I think you're, you're gonna see a very different attitude with South Florida Water Management District, uh, moving forward, uh, this is an absolute priority of the governor, he said it in his acceptance speech up in Tallahassee, he was here in Benita Springs forty-eight hours later, uh, talking about it, and going to other parts around the state, so I wanna commend him, he's off to a heck of a great start, he campaigned on it, and, uh, it, it's in motion, which is, which is a breath of fresh air, it's absolutely fantastic. Um, so, with that, uh, is there anything else?
Also, I just wanna also say, not only the governor, but the lieutenant governor was here, also, everybody, his whole cabinet seemed like.
Oh, absolutely.
Like his whole aunt were there, I mean, it wasn't just him by himself.
Yes, no, that's exactly right, that's exactly right, and State Senator Pasodomo was here, State Senator Lizbeth Benequisto wa- was here, Ray Rodriguez was here, absolutely, I mean, it, full gamut, and I'm thinking to myself, my gosh, I got back from Tallahassee last night at nine o'clock, and here I am at, you know, six, seven-thirty in the morning, unbelievable.
A chilly morning.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Did you hear about their plane, how to make the emergency?
Yeah, I did, I did.
It's, it's a confiscated plane, that is crazy.
Right, right, no, there has been some discussion on the airplanes.
Get a real plane.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't know what Governor Crist did, but I know there was some issues with Governor Scott, right?
Right.
He, you know, he, he may have just used his own private planes, I think, eventually, right? So, God bless the governor of Florida, and I'm in support of you getting a plane, so you can get around.
Right, wanna make a motion?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna put in twenty-five percent?
No, fifty percent, fifty percent, Matt. But team, thank you very much, uh, continue the great work, I'm, I love working with each of you, and, uh, whatever, whatever we can do, this legislative, um, process, I will be up in Tallahassee next week on some private business, uh, with some folks that I work with, but I will be touching base with Carol Green, her and I discussed that yesterday, uh, just, and, I hate to say the slow drip, but the slow drip of what we're looking to do, so, anybody else that's in Tallahassee, please, uh, do, you know, it's, it's, in New Hampshire, you know me, I'll throw New Hampshire in there, we were an hour away, I mean, you know, where you could run up there to Concord, New Hampshire, an hour away, it's one thing, it's, unfortunately, we're handicapped, it's four hundred and twenty-five miles away, and we don't have planes, or confiscated planes, or private planes, to get up there, um, but, I'm telling you, I, I, I know we all do, I really, really, really want this to happen, so, keep up the great work, we're all rowing in the same direction, it's wonderful, and, um, with that, I will, uh, motion to approve the minutes?
So, a little second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the minutes, and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Okay, and public comment? Kathy, do you have anything for pu- public comment?
About the airplane, Kathy McGrath, uh, just because it was confiscated because of a drug dealer, doesn't mean it wasn't fully operational. You know, uh, mechanical things can happen on any plane, I'm sure, I feel sure, that any airplane that any official's gonna get on, they've got excellent mechanics, 'cause I know what we went through with our airplane, with the annual inspections, where they tore it apart, cost us thousands of dollars, you can be sure that they were, that, that plane, I don't know, I know one thing, and we all know this, when something happens like this, it's big news, it's like it was maybe, uh, a second-class plane, I don't think it was. I agree with you, he does deserve better than that. And the only thing I wanna say is, if anyone watching hasn't been downtown lately, please go take a look, I call our library the Taj Mahal, oh my god, I'm so excited, and look at Mosaic's thing, things are really happening there, and I drive it every time I can, because I wanna check out the roundabouts, and let me tell you something, I went last night to the BSU meeting, and I took, I made sure I did Terry Street and all, and people are learning how to use them, and they work, you know, don't put your mindset that, I don't like this, I'm not gonna do it, we can all learn how to do it, and I think they're working well, right? Thank you.
Wonderful, thanks so much. Okay, um, anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, motion to.